It says recording, so. Fideligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Thank you.
So if we could have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Dr. Harrison, over to you for updates.
Good evening, everyone, and it's great to be here as we are readying for a wonderful holiday recess. As we begin the meeting tonight, I do want to welcome a new member of our team. Tonight, the board will be appointing our new district clerk and registrar, Patricia Roder, and Patricia is here with us tonight, so welcome, Patricia. We're thrilled to have you here on our team, and we look forward to a great partnership in the future, so welcome. So, that said, you know, we're certainly looking forward to a wonderful break, one that is going to give us all the opportunity to recharge our batteries. And that as we look to returning in January, you know, at this point in time, we anticipate returning for in-person learning within our existing hybrid model that will certainly continue to serve our students well. Tonight, we are going to engage in a real thorough presentation about where we are in our work and looking at our schedules in our schools, and from there, thinking about where opportunities may lie for us in the future. So certainly, stay tuned, but you know, there's a lot of great things that are going to happen for us here in the new year. When we think about that, those things that are going to occur, it's just not the wonderful student learning, the teaching that's going to occur, but I'm really excited as we have a busy schedule for us planned in focusing in on all of our social emotional learning work, our partnership with NYU, that all kicks off in January. So we're really eager to be able to launch that work, recognizing that it's going to be time-consuming, but it's going to be energizing because it's going to be transformational for our community and in our students' lives and the opportunities that it'll present for them in the future. So I'm really excited and optimistic as we head into the new year. Before we even think about that work, there's lots of other projects that have been underway and focus that we need to continue. The Building, excuse me, Buildings and Grounds Committee has continued all of their work related to the capital project. We've gone through the first round of bidding, bits, and we're getting ready for bid awarding. But before we land at that place, we're going to schedule a special meeting the first week back in January, and that meeting will focus solely on updates on the capital project, some decision-making on the board's part, before bid awards would be done in the middle of January. So please look for updates on that, and we look forward to having those important conversations in the new year. But I do want to thank everybody for your continued support, to thank our teachers for their dedication, their flexibility, the passion that they've shown through these challenging months that started this school year. To our parent community, you've been the best, and your understanding and your continued support truly has been motivational to me, to our administrative team, and all of our faculty and staff. And I gotta say, to our students, you've been troopers. You've done an incredible job. You've been resilient. You've been dedicated. You've been joyful. You've motivated and energized us as the adults and keep us going each and every day. So thank you to everyone, and I extend my very best wishes for continued happy holidays and a wonderful, healthy new year.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. I think at this point, we now have our presentation for the evening, so you still have the floor to lead us through an update on where we're at, at the, I guess, the, I guess, the third of the year poll, I guess.
Yes, yes. So this has been a year that has been filled with numerous surveys, and I know that some folks have commented along the way, yet another survey, but I have to tell you, these surveys have been really important in helping inform our work. So we felt it was appropriate to kind of conclude this calendar year with an update on our reopening process, and it almost seems comical to say reopening when we're thinking about turning into the new year and the fact that we have four months of the school year behind us, but the truth is that we continue to reflect on what we're doing. We continue to change our processes and practices based upon our experience. So in doing so, you know, we really took that multifaceted approach for reopening, and in doing so, we considered the different learning models that we are implementing across the district and having the AMPM model for our kindergarten and first graders, the flex model, hybrid model for two through 12, and then we had a number of families that selected 100% distance learning to suit their particular needs. We, working with the board, and we thank you for your support in looking at adding the additional staff that was needed to be able to deliver the programming that we saw as necessary, and we have had an incredible offering of professional learning that was associated with technology and in teaching in this hybrid model. And in doing so, we've drawn upon expertise here in our own school district, and we've certainly looked outside for that level of support that was needed. When we think about our students participating, and the vast majority of our children do attend either in the AMPM model or the hybrid model, but we've had a number of families that have selected to participate, have their children participate in 100% distance learning, and I can say we've seen a fluctuation in that throughout the year. You know, we've asked families to make a commitment through one grading period. However, there's been a few exceptions here and there, as families have had health needs and other needs that have surfaced, and we've, of course, worked to be flexible with families wherever we can. We've seen a bit of an uptick of about 2%. We are at about 9.5% the last time I gave an update on this. But so we can see a bit of a growth here. I think some of the transitions have occurred because of health needs in families, because of challenges folks have seen, but also because of travel and the holiday seasons, and frankly, some folks that had concern about exposure, whether it be their own, because they knew they were going to travel, or they didn't potentially want their children out interacting with a lot of others anticipating grandma or grandpa coming to visit over the holidays. So we've seen some fluctuation there. Back at the end of the first grading cycles, we saw a handful of kids that transitioned out to distance learning, but at the same time, we saw many that came back into the schools and whose families chose, or they wanted to be present for in-person learning. What's interesting, and I think is a bit of the nuance here, and Ms. Propper, I think you pointed it out last time we talked about some of this data, is looking at that spike in seventh grade. It's hard to be able to understand all of it associated there, but the one consideration, something that was noteworthy, is that when we look at that seventh grade, that was the first class where we introduced one-to-one in the middle school. So it makes you, introduces the wondering whether there's a connection to that experience, even though it doesn't, the same levels don't necessarily carry through, through grades eight and nine. But for the most part, you can see we have a pretty level percentage in and around that 11, 12%, with the exception of that one spike in, in seventh grade. So when we think about where we are now, Mary is going to lead us through some discussion about the work that we've been doing on the instructional side and really speak to some of the efforts that she has led with a number of our staff members across the district. Mary?
Thank you, Chris. So one of the things that we spoke about in an earlier meeting was the data that we were looking at to see how students are doing. And there's a quote that a lot of statisticians use that I love, which is that all models are wrong, but some are useful. And I think it's tremendously important for us to approach this data with caution and understand what it is we're looking at, what it can tell us, and what it doesn't tell us. So each year in grades K through eight, our students take beginning-of-the-year benchmark assessments, and these assessments are used to determine student readiness. Where are they? Are they ready for the curriculum that's about to be presented to them? Are they going to need some support in beginning of the year? And this is one of the considerations that we use as part of our NTSS or RTI system to see which students are going to receive that additional support. So in thinking about how could we see academically what the impact of the fall was, because we certainly knew that there was a social emotional impact, there was a structural impact on the way school worked, but we also want to look at the academic impact. And I thought, okay, let's look at this. Let's look at our fall benchmarks. So it's important to know that the administration was quite different than it's been in prior years. Many of these assessments, especially in the primary grades, are done one-on-one with a teacher, and that's going to look very different now. If they're being done online, some students were doing them in school, some students were doing them at home. In addition, we do running records, Fanta's and Pennell, or the Fanta's and Pennell or the TC assessments, and those are also an assessment where a teacher would sit one-on-one and listen to a child read and then discuss with them what they read. They're a very time-intensive assessment, and knowing that time face-to-face with kids was going to be at a premium this fall, teachers last spring and over the summer worked on modifying those assessments and shortening them a little bit to make that, make it easier to administer in this new world that we live in. So we know we're not looking apples-to-apples or oranges-to-oranges. We're really looking at very different things. But again, even though the data might be flawed, let's, let's look at it and see what it tells us. So I, what I did was I looked at three years' worth of beginning-of-the-year benchmarks to see what percentage of students were meeting the guidelines of where we hoped they would be at the beginning of the year, and therefore not set them up right away with any extra support. And what was interesting to see was that those percentages did not have a dramatic amount of difference over the last three years. In most grade levels, it might have fluctuated by two percentage points, but it also might have fluctuated by two or three percentage points two years ago and last year. So it wasn't only the impact of COVID. We did see, there were a couple of outliers, but mostly it looked very consistent, and we looked at it both from year to year. So how did first graders do three years ago, two years ago, and this year? But then also looking at it from a cohort, if you take a particular group of kids, what was their readiness level, let's say, three years ago in first grade, last year in second grade, this year in third grade? And it was really pretty consistent across the board. So what that tells us, what it might tell us, is that what happened over the spring did not have a dramatic impact on readiness of students in the fall, which is great news, and I think a real testament to our teachers, to our parents, and mostly to our students for the tremendous work that they were able to do under very, very challenging circumstances, and they come back to school ready to go. We go to the next slide, Chris, thanks. So another thing that has come up in a lot of our discussions is the Flex Wednesdays. We know that parents would love to have students in school as much as they possibly could. We also know that our teachers would love to have their students in their classrooms as much as they possibly could. However, we know that this model is brand-new for many, many people. It's challenging. It requires significant amount of time for planning, for collaboration, and for our own teachers to learn the skills that they need in order to teach in a hybrid or distance model. It, you can't just take a lesson plan from September of last year and implement it as is this year. It, it's really, really different, and the amount, again, the amount of time that our teachers are spending on making those transitions is really, really significant. So those half-days that were built in for teachers to do that have, have been something that we've been looking at and want to, you know, give a solid look at that. So first to think about the benefits of that time. One of the things that the teachers mentioned was that it gives a consistent model on Wednesday mornings. All kids are distance. Teachers aren't teaching in two concurrent models at one time. So it really levels the playing field on Wednesday morning, and everybody has the same experience. In the afternoon, they have that dedicated time for professional learning. And because we have given that dedicated time, and I know I made a commitment to the community, that we would not be pulling teachers from classes. Typically, in a, a school year, teachers are pulled to go to meetings, they're pulled to go to professional learning, they're pulled to go to conferences, and we've really made a commitment to the community to significantly reduce and to the degree that we can eliminate teachers being pulled from instruction because we know that we want them in the classroom with kids. Having this dedicated time on Wednesday afternoon really helps us with that. It's also had a very positive financial impact in that we aren't paying for substitutes while teachers are out at professional development. Our teachers are, are, have provided asynchronous activities for students to be doing in that Wednesday afternoon while the teachers are working on their own learning. Another really significant thing about it is having a block of time. I think all of us know that when you can sit down for an hour, two hours, and really focus on something, it's a very different experience than when you've got 30 minutes and you're, you're jumping from one thing to the next. So while a teacher may have a 40- or 50-minute preparation period during the day, they're coming right off teaching, they've got the short period of time, and then they're going right back into teaching again. With this Wednesday afternoon, they've got a block that they can really walk away from their work in the classroom and really think about their own learning so that when they go back into the classroom, they're even better prepared. So this is a list of some of the topics that have been covered in our Wednesday afternoon sessions beginning in September. So we're looking at approximately three and a half months of professional learning here. And you'll see it's a wide variety of topics, anywhere from going over our safety protocols to pedagogy that is, goes way beyond working in a hybrid environment such as looking at culturally responsive classrooms, providing effective feedback. But then we also wanted to provide professional learning opportunities for teachers on teaching in a hybrid invert, environment, teaching in a distance environment. And then, as you'll see on the right-hand side, a partial list of some of the technology applications that our teachers are using with students. And so we've had trainings on many of those, both from people within our district who are experts in these areas and from the vendors. We've had outside consultants come in and work with our teachers, and one of the really exciting things that's been happening on Wednesday afternoons are the number of learning sessions being offered by our Google PD team in using the technologies and in, by our instructional coaches in teaching in the, in this environment, as well as just good, solid pedagogy about how to get through to, how to get through to kids. So again, this is, this is not a complete list, but this is examples of the kinds of things that our teachers have been involved in. Knowing that there were concerns about Flex Wednesdays and taking a half-day when students were not with teachers, we certainly wanted to reflect on it and ensure that it was worth it, that what we were doing was worth it. So again, we spoke to teachers about the benefits of this, some of which I already mentioned to you. We did look at considering whether we could alternate student attendance on Wednesdays in the mornings. And after looking at all of that, we determined, based on some of the things we said before, like the fact that Wednesday provides that single day, we also looked at the fact that at the secondary level, it would have required some pretty creative changes in scheduling due to shared staffing across the middle school and high school. And therefore, looking at this, we felt that the benefits that we're gaining at this point are, are really important to us, and we plan on maintaining the model for our Flex Wednesdays. So these are some of the operational supports that have been implemented since we reopened, and I, I'm going to piggyback off what Chris said about, it's interesting that here we are right before the new year and talking about reopening, but we are constantly thinking about reopening and how we did what we did and how we can change things and make them better. So we certainly had changes within the physical plant in order to ensure that students would be appropriately distanced, that our hallways would function well. A massive amount of PPE, purchase and distribution to staff. We instituted the pre-screening survey, which helps us identify students that, that may need to go for testing, faculty that may need to go for testing. It helps us understand the health of everyone in the district. We continued with the one-to-one Chromebook distribution to ensure that all of our students were able to access learning at home. We've unfortunately gotten really good at contact tracing, something that is very, very time-intensive. We've got, I think at this point, really good processes in place. We do a debrief after every case to talk about what we've learned, what we can do better. We are, all of us have Department of Health on speed dial at this point. So that, that's been a major adjustment for all of us to learn how to do that contact tracing. We've hired extra staff and monitors to supervise students in classrooms when teachers are remote. We've had to make difference in different transportation schedules, food service changes, and a lot of work put into having a reopening webpage that we work on frequently updating to make sure that the information going out to the community is current and complete.
So when we, we think about this, there's a lot of takeaways, Mary, and a lot of things that really stand out for us as having been critical factors and, and looking at the items that we've learned. Right now, we can say that there is no known spread within our schools among our students and Irvington employees. We certainly have had many cases, but there has been no evidence of transmission between individuals in our schools. But at the same time, we recognize that operations are extremely fragile. So when we think about the fragility here, we're not talking about necessarily the spread that can occur from person to person, where we've been fortunate there, but we think about the impact on our faculty and staff. We've made adjustments along the way with each and every case and looking at changing schedules, looking at the delivery of programs. So for example, where we know unfortunately, we've had two closures for in-person learning in, in Dallas Lane, we've learned from each of those experiences. You know, the, the delivery of a program at an elementary school is quite different than it looks at a secondary school. It is much more intensive, much more hands-on with staff, and requires more staff to deliver such a program. So we've made adjustments in our operations based upon that. You know, originally, we looked at trying to prevent kids from moving about the building for specials, for example. And now, wherever possible, we actually stream specials into a classroom, and the specialists remain in their home base or their classroom, and the students remain in their classroom but are supervised by an aide. So if there was to be a positive case, we, let's say, among a specialist, that specialist isn't then going from classroom to classroom throughout a day, introducing that need to quarantine in those classrooms, or in a case where a teacher is then moving classroom to classroom, and then they're exposed to a student that may have been positive that would result in a quarantine. So that's one example of the adjustments that we make. But you have to understand that when we consider the, the concept of proximate contact, we're looking at individuals, and we're guided by the health department's regulations here, and that if you're in a space such as this meeting room with an individual who tests positive for a period of time longer than 10 minutes, you're going to be required to quarantine. If you look at someone over a 24-hour window that's had cumulative contact, proximate contact with an individual for up to 15 minutes, that can result in quarantining. So when you think about staff members that are moving throughout a building, and our staff, I gotta say, are doing a wonderful job, abiding by and enforcing all of our social distancing requirements, PPE requirements, implementing all those positive habits that we've talked about. But that idea of teachers coming into contact with each other for a few minutes, having to go speak to an administrator in the office, and then the administrator popping in to support in the classroom that's supporting the students having a difficult time, 15 minutes can add up pretty quickly. Then we also have to understand that life happens for individuals that folks could hurt their backs. Folks could have a death in the family. There could be issues that bring up other challenges in a school where people rightfully have a, a need to take a day off. But then we can't forget the fact that folks can have quarantine orders placed upon them outside of our school district. So when you think about all those implications, it really makes the staffing of our schools very, very fragile. On every given day, we're monitoring the number of students out, we're monitoring the number of staff members out. And as I've said before, we struggle to get any substitutes. We have a desperate need for substitute teachers. And without more substitutes, we're going to have challenges day-to-day with operations in our schools. I know speaking to my superintendent colleagues, much like in Irvington where there are closures, it's not because of widespread COVID outbreaks. It's because of staffing shortages and not being able to have enough staff to deliver their programs or to safely supervise students. So that is the one fragility that really, really stands out here that we have to keep in mind. And that fragility just does not grow from the experiences and potential exposures that may happen within our school buildings. We have to consider that there's always staff members out every day in a normal year and in a pandemic. And then you add that up to any possible exposures that may happen within our schools. You think about exposures that may happen outside of our schools, it makes staffing very difficult. The one thing that has really worked well for us is the cohorting and thinking about the impacts of positive cases. Almost on a daily basis, I've sent out letters to our community being very transparent, identifying the cases that have occurred in our schools, the impacts on school operations. And while due to HIPAA requirements, I can't share a lot of identifiers, but you can go to the New York State COVID dashboard, and you can look at all that data that's published. We report it on a daily basis. Carol loves doing that every single day, five, by four o'clock. But you can see the real-time data that exists and the number of students that have tested positive, the number of staff members that have tested positive. But that cohort model has been critical. For example, the letter that I sent out today, and I can tell you I'm going to send one tomorrow because before the meeting, we were looking into another COVID case. The cohort model actually keeps schools open and it limits contacts. We've had dozens of cases where kids have tested positive, but because of their last day in school, they were not deemed to be contagious when they were present on the campus, thus exposing other students and other staff members. So more times than not, when COVID has surfaced in our schools, the cohorting model has prevented further quarantines and other risks of possible closures for in-person learning. When we recognize all this, there's certainly some give and takes with all of it. The hybrid instruction model is extremely challenging for students and teachers at all levels. Nothing is perfect. Teachers are bending over backwards to navigate technology, to utilize the technology. I can tell you, over this week, I spent a lot of time popping into Google Meets and observing and seeing student experience and teacher experience. And I've seen the most amazing lessons. I've seen teachers being so creative, so flexible and innovative in their, in their approaches. But then challenges come up with technology. It's not perfect. It's difficult for a teacher that is teaching a, a lesson for kid, that a kid's at at home, kids that are in school, and it's hard to always catch that question from home. There's noise, there's distractions that pop up in the backgrounds that are really, really difficult at times. But folks are navigating it well. We would say the technology certainly poses challenges for, for our younger kids. And so when we think about our kindergarten and first graders, certainly that AMPM model is serving them well. When we think about second and third graders, they have less trouble, but it's certainly not perfect. Certainly, there are challenges that are present, and I was able to see some of that firsthand, as I said, over this week. So when we think about the work that is going on in our schools, you've heard a lot from Mary, you've heard a lot from me and from Carol throughout the summer months and leading in to this school year. But I think it's important to be able to hear our principals' voices a little bit right now. So I would ask that Jay, if you could promote all of our principals so they could come forward and have an opportunity to give a little bit of an update here. So that said, I'm looking for people to pop in.
And are you able to remove the presentation briefly so we can?
I'm sorry? Yeah, I can do that if you want.
Thank you.
So I would like to begin by welcoming and thanking my administrative colleagues for joining us. So I'd like to begin with Dow's Lane. So Dr. Cantor, do you want to take a minute to share some examples of some of the great work that's been happening in the school as well as some of the real challenges that surface?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm speaking for both Liza Wishney and the whole staff at Dow's Lane. It has certainly been an interesting four months for us at Dow's Lane. Our students and staff have shown tremendous grit and perseverance during this very difficult time. Our teachers and our related service providers and our coaches and admins all work together to refine the New York State standards and focus on the most critical of standards and work on our instruction, as Mary was talking about. We have mastered the micro lesson and our teachers teach in a five-minute block where it's explicit and direct. And then our students sometimes have a short time to work on the work they need to do independently, and sometimes that work goes home for the other half of the day or when they're remote. Our students have also learned new ways to engage with each other with masks on from six feet apart. All of our learning stations are six feet apart, but students still turn and talk and talk to each other. Our special education teachers and our ENL teachers work with our students that have identified programs, and they work one-on-one or small group onsite and also offsite. We offer explicit feedback and we assess students and as Mary described, sometimes through Google meets, and it's not always easy. That is definitely a challenge to assess a young child through a Google meet like this, but we have done it and we continue to do it. And our RTI or MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports Interventionists, continue to progress monitor all of our children in both ELA and math. Our specials and our project lead the way teachers have adapted the way they teach. Some are on screens and some are in classrooms. And although we can't sing at Dow's Lane, we build, we dance, we move, and we still have engineers that are learning how to maneuver technical items and creative ways to do things with masks on. Everyone has individualized baggies of supplies or individualized tubs. We're not sharing anything. We have relied very heavily on our social emotional learning support team. Our psychologist, social worker and school counselor worked with all of our staff, our families and our children and continue to do so. We are working with our children and their change behaviors, the differences in learnings, the challenges of learning at home and staying focused on a screen. Technology has probably been our biggest challenge for our youngest learners. It's hard to maneuver through sites and Google apps and different programs that we use. It's also hard for our children to sustain attention on Google meets, and we've heard from families, that's a challenge. Our children are so young, they don't work independently for a long time. So they need a lot of care when they're offsite, just like they do when they're onsite. But we've partnered together and we've partnered with families and we are all doing the best we can to help our children at this time.
Great. Thank you so much, Andrea. Ms. Chapnick, please give us a window in the Main Street, please.
Well, I want to say that Andrea presented in Andrea and Liza, similar to what's happening at Dow's Lane, you know, we work pretty closely together so that our systems and approaches are aligned. I'm going to add a little bit of a different lens into what's happening at Main Street School. A strength of Main Street is our community, our sense of community and building relationships. That's what we're all about. You know, we have this unique opportunity that we're a four or five building and that we can do things together. But right now, doing things together looks incredibly different than it ever has in the past. So we're redefining the opportunities that we provide for our students. Wednesdays are key for all of us. Just like Mary said earlier, we really value the Wednesday time because it gives a platform for everyone to be in the same remote experience so that we can offer things like our character building assemblies. For example, in the way beginning of the meeting, there was a Unity Day picture. So every year, we participate in Unity Day as part of October is Bullying Prevention Month. And this year, our Unity Day picture was not us standing out on the field as humans forming a word. It was taking pictures of a tile and turning those tiles into our words instead. And so we're, that's sort of our approach is like, what do we, how do we want to foster a sense of school-wide community? And you know, what do we have to do to be creative to make it happen? So we've also used Wednesdays for author visits. We had Ayesha Saye come visit our school and do assemblies with our students after the entire school as part of the Global Read Aloud, read her book, Amal Unbound, and engaged in really thoughtful learning, both in the classroom and through paralleled experiences in the library around culture and geography of Pakistan. And it culminated with a visit with the author. We couldn't have done that without the Wednesday remote experience. And it's an experience that we would have had in the past, but it looked very different given our current circumstances. Another example of community, well, tomorrow, we actually have an assembly with Dr. Blake Brandis, who does beatboxing around growth mindset. And so it's another example of a way that we can foster shared experiences among our students when everybody's in the remote time. Another way that we're looking at how we, you know, beyond what Andrea shared in terms of, you know, what's happening in the classroom with academics and with all of our staff and how we're getting to students in so many different ways, we think it's important to provide other opportunities where students can still find a way to connect with things that are important to them or to make choices about how they want to spend their time. So we're so grateful. We can still run a club program while it's revised. We still have one. So our students are in the running club, in the newspaper club, in the Reader Theater, Mathletes. We have a homework extra support club. We have a guitar club. You know, our intramural program is running, our music program is running. And so none of this is happening without like an incredibly dedicated staff that behind the scenes is spending like intense amounts of time considering how do they make these experiences happen for our students in this revised environment. And so hopefully you all got a copy of the first edition of the Main Street School Times this afternoon. Make sure that's good reading over the break. Additionally, you know, other things. So it's important that we're doing that for our students and our staffs, for our school community, but also for families. And so we've always had opportunities for families to connect with experiences that happen at Main Street School. So this year, we were able to do the talent show, thanks to the amazing support of a dedicated group of staff through the PTSA. I mean, it was like a highlight of the first part of the school year that our students could, you know, exhibit their specially unique talents, and we could all watch and celebrate that and really get to know our kids, you know, without their masks on, right? We only know, you know, I made a joke at one of the assemblies, when they take their masks, I don't even recognize the fourth graders. I'm like, put your masks back on. I don't even know who you are. So like, you know, it's funny, but not so, you know, it's a little sad. And we've also had the Parent-Child Book Club. We did our first of what we hope is a few social emotional learning parent sessions last night, which was pretty well-attended around emotion regulation and also things like the Main Street School Times. So, you know, it's looking at the overall approach about how do we look within and beyond our classroom to make sure that we're fostering, you know, that sense of community and building relationships. And so just to add on to what Andrea said about the SEL work with our staff, we've been focusing on the social emotional learning during our faculty meetings, using the Castle Framework, which is work that Dr. Harrison alluded to earlier, that we're going to venture into as a school as we continue on to the school year. With our students, we have SEL check-ins with our social emotional learning team in small groups. Students are checking in. We also have our counseling push-in lessons, our welcoming schools lessons, and then with our families, which I hope, we have our Main Street School Scoop, which always has information to connect parents with what's happening in school related to our character building and social emotional learning. Everyone, from students to staff, to parents, to all of us, you know, this wouldn't happen without demonstrating flexibility, resiliency, patience, kindness and respect. I mean, we are pushing ourselves to our limits in every single way, every single day, all throughout the day. This is something that in my entire career, I have never experienced the emotional up and downs. I have never had to sit and listen to really a range of emotions from everyone, from students, parents and staff around their daily experiences. It is trying and it is emotional. And I think that it doesn't come without everybody, you know, working together to provide, you know, the best possible experience in the worst, you know, case scenario. And so struggles to that point, the hybrid model, as Dr. Harrison and Mary both mentioned earlier, you know, the management of materials for who's in, who's out, making sure they have what they need. Our remote-only students, making sure we make those conscious efforts to make those students feel connected and apart and are not always part of the conversation. You know, assessing students, Andrea talked about assessments, you know, everything looks different and takes more time in this model and patience. Wearing masks all day is like so challenging for all of us, the social distancing, our protocols. Attendance is like a bear. You know, with parents making decisions in the moment about like if their child's going to come in that day or not in that day, you know, we have to make sure it's our job to make sure kids are accounted for. And so if we don't have like everyone on board as part of the system, it is hours upon hours of work to make from the COVID survey. On Monday, 50 parents didn't fill out the COVID survey before, you know, we were about to welcome the kids into school. That means we have to make phone calls to all those families. Those are real challenges every single day. Technology, we mentioned, you know, having access to microphones, additional monitors. You know, there's just, there are a lot of layers to what's going on. You know, I want to look like and thank all my colleagues and the board. You know, we've worked together as a team to really support one another. I can pick up the phone and call any one of my administrative colleagues and they will stop what they're doing. And I know they're in a ton of things that they have to do, you know, to listen and, you know, offer an ear and support. And we couldn't do it without the support of one another. So I just want to take this moment to thank all of you because I couldn't do this without you. You know, Chris said in his email to us about coming tonight, he said, you know, for one of the administrators to come from, the one of the administrators. And I said, well, I'm the only administrator at Main Street School, but I want you to notice that it's not one. Look, everyone comes out, like we are here to support one another because like we couldn't do it alone. And so thank you to the board for all of your support. And, you know, so that's it. So that's a glimpse into Main Street School. So thank you. And one last thing, Patricia, welcome to the team.
Great. Thank you so much, Joyce. Thank you. So David, you want to give us a little update on how things are going at the middle school, please?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, and thanks to the board. I want to start just by wishing everybody happy as the holidays and best wishes for a joyous and healthy new year. Find myself wrestling the mic away from Ms. Chapnick once again in our long-storyed history. Um, you know, there have been, as you might imagine, any number of challenges over the course of this year thus far. One of the things I was thinking about when I thought about tonight was, you know, recognition that we are a district that has always prized experience. We think about our hiring practices, we think about our, the things that we look for in a person when we want to welcome a new person onto our team. Experience, whether that be varied experience, unique experience, whatever it may be, experience is a buzzword for us that we never get too far away from. There is not a single person in our district who has, who had a day's worth of experience with any of this prior to the start of this year. And so I want to say that when we talk about the challenge, the challenge is a new day every day, whether that's technology, and I won't get into the nitty-gritty of each individual challenge, but I want everyone to recognize that the hybrid model, that the reopening of our schools, that the restrictions and the distancing and the mask wearing, all those things, those are all a challenge. And they're a challenge because they're hard, but they're a challenge because we've never done them before. And every day that we do them, we get a little bit better at them, right? But there's a little bit more to do. And so I want to just start by saying that. I don't want to spend a lot of time on challenges because, you know, quite honestly, we could go on all night about that. I want to echo what Joyce said about the support of everybody, our teachers, our fellow administrators, the board, the community. That's been a source of strength. And quite honestly, I think our teachers have done heroic work. So that's my segue to talking about successes. Our successes lie and are rooted in this idea that we have stayed open, we've stayed healthy, and we've stayed positive. And we are trying every single day to do that a little bit better than we did it the day before. And I think those are products of well-thought-out design. Think about back in the summer when we talked about our reopening plan, we've talked already about the cohorting and hybrid model that's helped us to ensure that we don't have spread in our schools. I am thankful as the principal of the middle school to have a partner like Allison Daly, who has been there every step of the way. And I am incredibly proud to call the teachers and the staff of Irvington Middle School my colleagues, because they are professional and dedicated staff. And we've been supported by this wonderful Irvington community. So that's been the key to staying open, staying healthy and staying positive. The biggest success that I would go to from there, quite honestly, is the instructional creativity. Every single day, you know, we just finished our first round of observations, and every single classroom that we visited, we saw something that was, in one way or another, amazing. Whether that was a classroom where we were seeing a teacher who had spent years developing these rich, engaging learning activities, only to see them, you know, not really be able to be done in the way that he or she had been used to. And so they reimagine them. So they don't get away from what was so valuable, but they found a way to make it just as valuable, just as engaging in a completely different model of instruction. I was in an earth science class and I watched students work on this hiking trail project that had been a hallmark of the class for years. And every year, it's a little bit different, but this year it was a lot different. And students were able to not only understand the ideas of topography and understand the differences in elevation, how they present on a map, but how they actually play out in developing an application for that topography and what it means to go on a hike and what it means to advertise a hiking trail and so forth. Similarly, we've seen teachers who have had to completely reimagine. And what they've done is they found opportunities for new learning experiences while having to temporarily step away from what's so familiar. Our music program, this is the time of year where we would ordinarily be celebrating our holiday concert series or our winter concert series, pardon me, around the holidays. And we'd be celebrating the talents of our students and their hard work and all of that. And that's just a wonderful tradition that, you know, is the one of the many that we've lost this year. But that said, I sat and watched a class where students learned how to compose music, took an image, used that image as a piece of inspiration and composed an original piece based upon it, and then were able to write and discuss about how they came up with that piece and what that inspiration was drawn from in the image that they selected. That's a teacher taking advantage of a situation that could otherwise be an incredibly difficult one and turning it into a new learning opportunity that will pay benefits for students down the road. That's what I've talked about when I talk about the pride in our staff and the hard work that everyone's put in. You know, and similarly, finding ways to be flexible where flexibility is the word of the day. You know, we've had, and Dr. Harrison said it very well earlier, I won't belabor the point, but on any given day, we might have someone that because of an exposure, because of a situation, has to suddenly teach from home. They're waiting for test results. You know, they woke up with a sore throat, they're being responsible, but they want to continue to teach their students. So they find a way to provide instruction from home. We cover their classes to make sure that there's supervision. Similarly, students who wake up in that same situation, all of a sudden, they've got to learn from home. Those students are showing flexibility, those families are showing flexibility, and our teachers are showing flexibility to provide them with meaningful instruction. When they were ready to see that student sitting in front of them, and now they've got to find a way to reach them in a totally different setup, right? Planning has taken on a whole new, a whole new level of work, a whole new meaning and a whole new level of importance, quite honestly. And so I'm proud. As I said, I'm proud to be a part of the Irvington schools, as I have been for 12 years now. But I'm more proud than ever, and I'm more proud than ever, not only to be a part of this wonderful school system, but to be a part of this community that has really gone all in on the effort to make sure that this reopening has been and continues to be a successful one. There are ups and downs, and there will continue to be. But as 2020 comes to a close, and not a moment too soon, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank everybody for their continued commitment to this. And I believe that 2021 will be a continued forward momentum as we continue this reopening and we return to something that feels a little bit more familiar to all of us. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for all of that, David. Juliette, would you mind sharing some of your high school experiences?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, everyone. Good evening. As Chris shared earlier, students and staff have done an incredible job, you know, keeping to our reopening protocols, which is David was referencing in the summer as we were planning, all very new, one-way stairwells and hallways, and just everyone has done an incredible job. We've also been engaging in new ways amidst this pandemic. No one a year ago could have imagined that this is the position we find ourselves in. But with regard to interactions, But with regard to interactions, it is incredible to see the warmth with which teachers and students greet one another in meets, in hallways, in the classrooms. Just the enthusiasm to see one another virtually and in person and make those connections. With regard to connections, we've also been looking for new ways for our students to connect and, um, and schedule times to meet. We've introduced Calendly, uh, an additional way for students to be able to see their counselors' calendars and make appointments to meet with one another. We um, continue to find opportunities to, to share many of the experiences that we would during non-pandemic times. So for example, we've had scores of college representatives in, albeit virtually, but our students have had the opportunity to connect with admissions counselors. We've also identified creative ways, as was shared in other buildings, to replicate the community building. So in the fall, looking, you know, thinking about homecoming and restructuring that event. Uh, in February, we have color wars coming up and thinking about ways to continue to build community in this new environment. Our clubs are meeting both in person and virtually. We're growing our club offerings, uh, thanks to the ongoing partnership of the I E F, P T S A and the district. We're able to offer new clubs. For example, very soon we'll have the People of Color and Ally Student Union. All of our existing clubs remain very active. For example, just this past weekend, our debate club had an incredible finish at the American Debate League's Winter Classic Competition. Um, with regard to instruction, as Mary and Joyce were sharing earlier, Flex Wednesdays has provided an incredible opportunity for staff to learn with one another. Um, you know, in partnership with Sarah Rust, Matt, our department chairs, and just the gift of time to be able to collaborate and, um, you know, and find new ways in this hybrid environment to engage our students actively. Uh, our partnership with I D E, N Y U and Castle to, you know, move the district and building areas of focus forward. Uh, Sarah has offered workshops on Flex Wednesdays related to assessment and feedback. As Mary mentioned, our Google Teams at the buildings have been able to work individually with teachers and in groups on these new tools. Um, we've also been thinking about assessment differently. Um, many of our more traditional assessments are shorter in length. We're also using Test Wizard, Cami, Google Forms. Uh, teachers have also been spending a great deal of time on Wednesdays developing additional and greater opportunities for students to demonstrate their knowledge and skills in the classroom, both individually and collaboratively. Students are also providing one another feedback more than ever. Um, you know, in the virtual environment, especially on the Flex Wednesdays when everyone is learning in one mode. Students are able to see one another's work more than ever and provide one another feedback. We've also identified exciting ways to um, have students engage in labs and all of the sciences. So we have Gizmo for our remote learners. Um, with the installation of the polycarbonate dividers in our science classrooms and the additional P P E. Students at school are able to engage in labs much like they would under normal circumstances. Uh, P E is using platform, um, a new way to both like teach and assess student learning. Uh, as David had mentioned and referenced earlier, students in music classes are not only playing instruments when possible and as much as possible. They're learning about composition and a new unit in body percussion has been added this year. Uh, with regard to challenges, you know, as actually Chris was sharing earlier, um, the challenges, I think, to the whole region of having, not having enough substitutes, that's a huge challenge. Um, pacing is also different this year. So we've talked a lot about the technology and, and we've all experienced it, the muting, the unmuting, am I sharing my screen, am I not sharing my screen? So all of, all of that coupled with the new learning and the technology takes time. So um, time that normally ordinarily is spent solely on curriculum, so pacing is a little bit different this year. Um, also with regard to microphones, as was mentioned earlier, the uh, webcams and the mics built in are meant for whoever's, you know, nearby to be heard. So it's challenging sometimes for students who might be twenty feet or so away from that microphone to be um, audible to students who are remote that day. Um, also, as mentioned earlier, you know, as a teacher, when you're sharing your screen, or all of us have experiences, when you're sharing your screen, you're unable to see the faces there. So that's, you know, that's another challenge that we're experiencing. But all in all, as has been shared earlier, the dedication of all stakeholders and the partnership of, of everyone has made this a very um, successful year thus far, and we're looking forward to our continued partnership and success together. Um, you know, without one another, we wouldn't be able to do this. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Juliette and Andrea, Juliette, David, Joyce. Thank you so, so very much for, for all that you are doing to the rest of our administrative team. Um, as was indicated, it has been an incredible team effort. And every single staff member in our district deserves recognition for all the work they do, regardless of the, the job title someone holds. Each person is playing a key role um, in the success in supporting us through the challenges that we're enduring on a, on a daily basis. Um, also, uh, each of the, the union heads, um, you know, especially I want to reach out, shout out to, to James Grovan for the I F A have been phenomenal partners and, and are consistently focused on our students, um, their wellbeing and doing everything we possibly can to deliver the best possible programs. So it truly, truly has been a, a team effort. I'm sure at this point in time, while we have a, a number of other slides in our deck that we will review tonight, um, I know our administrators, some of them have um, other commitments and are in between two different um, items right now. Um, but I'm sure there may be a couple of comments or questions that may surface from the board. So I think now would be an appropriate time to do that because I do believe some of the administrators have to move on to other events tonight.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Harrison, for that. And uh, thank you to all of the administrators for uh, their time this evening and for uh, their insight and just at a more broader level. Uh, we all know that this is a year unlike any other and certainly appreciate all of the uh, hard work and efforts at both uh, from the administrators and all of the staff at all the buildings in managing the, the challenges uh, that we've had. So uh, at this point, mindful of the time, I'll stop talking and see uh, if there are questions from the trustees at this, at this point on the presentation. I'll say, uh, you can direct questions either, you know, to Dr. Harrison. And then to the extent, uh, one of the uh, building principals has something additional to add, uh, they'll, they'll certainly uh, be afforded the, the chance to, to ask. So I'll say, for now, let's just focus on the first part of the presentation. My understanding is that Dr. Cantor uh, has flexibility in her schedule and will uh, be able to still be on for the rest of the presentation, which has a more dowsling component in terms of uh, that, that discussion than obviously the financial piece, which we'll talk about with Ms. Stein. So with that, uh, Dave, any questions so far?
Excuse me, David, your mic? Yes, uh, I do, I have one question. Uh, before I get to the question, I want to echo what you said. Uh, Brian, Ms. Friedman, uh, I want to say thank you to uh, all the administrators, all the teachers as we head into the Christmas holiday and the new year and so forth. Uh, I just, you know, through all of the, the deep, critical thinking we've done about A M, P M schedules, synchronous and asynchronous stuff and pivoting and new normals and all those different things. Uh, you know, teaching really is a superpower and administrating schools uh, is really a superpower. So I just want to, on behalf of myself, uh, constituents, I get to represent, thank you to all of you uh, in the schools, uh, helping our kids. It's been terrific. I also want to take a moment to thank the community for their patience and support. Specifically, as many of the administrators mentioned, the P T S A, the I F A, the parents who developed all kinds of cool resources like chess classes and uh, cooking classes that are happening on the internet, just really, you know, again, to use that word that everybody probably hates now, pivoting to doing some really fun stuff. With that, uh, let's not focus on rumors and things we hear on, in the world outside, but it's focus on the things that are actually happening. And I, with that, the positive things that are happening, because there's so much negative going on, that focusing on the things that we can celebrate rather than the things that we can't and we can argue and get angry about, I'm going to choose to focus on the can do. So I hope everybody will out there will join me. Uh, one question I have, um, we heard, I guess this is mostly for um, David and Juliette and Chris as well. We heard a lot about middle uh, uh, F and P and Ames Web in terms of looking at data um, and thinking about student growth. We didn't really hear anything about uh, middle school and high school and, and with while we have them, I'd love to have an opportunity to hear about some of that. How we're looking at student growth and where they are and where we're going to be.
Yeah, so um, certainly when we think about uh, Ames Web data, as Mary referenced earlier, that is a, a K eight model. Um, so that data is being reviewed through the middle school. And in fact, um, I sat in um, with a data team meeting at the middle school just about two, three weeks ago. That was led by Ms. Daly and their review of um, data uh, um, at the middle school level. And similarly, um, I attended a high school chairs meeting that was uh, led by Ms. G M and Mr. Samuelson that was focusing on different sets of student data. Um, and so, you know, I would like to defer to David and Juliette to talk about um, assessment in general and um, some of the um, efforts that are underway to review data in middle school and high school um, to monitor student growth and progress.
Yes, um, so a lot of our data, as I talked about earlier with assessment, we're looking at assessment um, differently this year. We are, our traditional assessments are, you know, summative assessments are shorter in length and really focused um, largely on, you know, knowledge and skill. Uh, but knowledge and skill, kind of as we've always talked about, more at a problem-based, like real-world application um, way, like not our more traditional sort of answers that one could find, but ones that demonstrate true understanding of the content. Uh, with the, you know, with the additional time, we're continuing to look and cultivate our common assessments uh, within courses and also talking and having more time to transition with regard to skills and requisite skills as students move through the continuum. So those are, you know, some ways that we are continuing to look at our own data within, um, data that we are generating from assessments, both formative and summative, that we are creating. And then in some places, like in our world languages, we still have the Apple assessment. So, you know, that is, you know, an additional measure that we have, for example, in world languages.
Great. Thank you. Uh, David, are you still there?
Just a quick technical, I don't know if we can bounce to see the, it's hard to see.
That's what, that's what we're handling right now. Yeah.
Okay, um, so, so Chris, just to follow up on, on what you'd said, we did, uh, we, we are continuing to utilize the Ames Web assessment. So that is a, a benchmark assessment for all of our students um, in, in, in all three grades. And, and uh, as Dr. Harrison noted, um, that is uh, part of the data review process that happens on a, a routine basis um, through our data team. Uh, you know, having lost some other, um, you know, standardized uh, measures from, from last year, uh, that those being obviously our New York State assessments, as well as the Apple assessment that, that Juliette just mentioned. Um, you know, we are, we are also focused on, on looking at other forms of data, whether they be classroom assessment or those that we can kind of glean through common assessments. Um, that, you know, frankly, we're using some of our Flex Wednesday time to look at. So um, teachers, I was just in a, in a conversation with our, with our math teachers in the sixth grade the other day, um, looking at uh, common assessment data that's been, that, that has been and is currently being developed uh, to, to look at, you know, students that are between our, our Math Six and our accelerated program and, and identifying students whose performance um, is indicative that uh, they, they may, for instance, be a, a candidate for the, the accelerated program. Um, yeah, that's, that's an example of the data that we're focused on right now, having not had the, the broader measures, broader standardized measures uh, that we would normally have come into the year with uh, in some cases. So uh, continuing that work and, and continuing to try to grow in that use of data uh, across the board. We are looking forward, also as Juliette mentioned, to revisiting the Apple uh, come this spring uh, as well as um, you know, re- returning to having, well, well, I wouldn't say we're looking forward to the New York State assessments. We are certainly looking forward to having uh, some, some uh, broader measures of data to, to look at student performance.
Great, great. Thank you. And, and I would say what has been, from my experiences and referencing the two particular data-focused meetings that I've attended in recent weeks has been the level of enthusiasm and commitment that all the faculty in those meetings have had. And, and digging constantly deeper, looking at the tools um, at the middle school level, really exploring the power of Ames Web, making connections with Ames Web data and uh, class grades and experiences in classrooms, comparing it with student scheduling and looking at opportunities to enhance student experiences. At the high school level, um, data going in a different direction and looking at cohort-specific data results and looking at how students were progressing by per, and when I say, I want to say cohorts, I should say um, not cohort A and cohort B, um, but when we think of different demographic-based data. Uh, and, and, and how um, different segments of our school population are performing, looking at trend data and how students are progressing through the high school. Um, so there's those immediate looks into the data that we're referenced. Um, but then we're continuing to step back and take that global view of what's happening. Um, just because there are immediate needs now and looking at assessing student performance um, and growth in this particular model doesn't mean that we stop the other big picture work that we're continuing to do. So from my seat, it's been really exciting uh, to be able to see that balanced commitment and uh, really the innovation and shifts in, in assessment to produce more data on a regular basis to inform instruction, uh, real-time data, thinking about what's happening in classrooms. I can think of Juliette when we sat in on a math lesson about two and a half weeks ago and um, looking at the number of touchpoints there were through that, that lesson where teachers were collecting feedback from students utilizing different technology tools, um, different applications where students were stopping. And we think of that exit ticket concept. Think of two or three exit tickets occurring throughout a class period at times and teachers tracking that data from class to class to inform their, their planning. One reminder that we do want to have when we think about a secondary school is that um, when, at the, at the middle school level, David's talking about common assessments, right? So we do have like those standard sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade classes where students have those common experiences. So David referenced meeting with math teachers earlier in the week, and they're able to compare those common experiences, data sets to look at how students are doing, progressing throughout the course of the year with those common experiences. Where it starts to get a little more difficult and challenging is when you do hit that high school environment, because things start to become more teacher-specific and course-specific because there's many areas where you have one teacher that's teaching a subject or there's limited sections. So a lot of it is dependent on that teacher's review of their own data, which is, I just gave one example, that math teacher doing an outstanding job. A shout out to Ms. DiNapoli for the work that she was doing. Uh, but then the, the common dialogue that they're having on a, on a department level and then on a school level as it grows out.
Oh, okay. So I'm glad you raised the high school model and specifically math, because I'm just trying to get an understanding. We've talked about how pacing has changed, for example. So I was wondering if we could get some input on, we don't know if there are going to be regents in June, one way or the other, correct? We know, we know that there aren't going to be any in January.
Correct.
Does the high school still try to prepare the children as if they're going to be taking the regents as an assessment? Is that the pacing goal that's set?
Yeah, so uh, I want to say I, I certainly defer to Juliette, but in doing so, kind of draw back to some of the comments from our elementary principals earlier on and some of the comments that marries me throughout uh, this entire process and thinking about those power standards that are focused upon in classrooms and the work the teachers are doing is to make sure that those key critical um, curricular benchmarks are being hit throughout the course of the year. But um, I just wanted to make that connection, Juliette, but the floor is yours.
Yeah, no, I wanted to echo the sentiment that you started, Chris. And yes, Beth, uh, the high school continues in all classes that culminate in a regions, um, all classes that culminate in an A P exam uh, to continue to keep the pacing so that students are prepared for those exams. You know, what the state is recognizing in the most recent um, release from State Ed, for example, just to kind of share, like pacing is a challenge that is not unique to um, to our high school, is just an example of that, is for example, science required lab minutes. Um, if, if there is a regions in um, June, will be waived. The state has already said, so it's just an example, you know, we are still, we have Gizmo, as I mentioned earlier. So our remote students are engaging um, in labs and, you know, Gizmo, but you're actually engaging. and manipulating and conducting the lab and the polycarbonate dividers, as I said earlier. And the PPE is allowing students who are in school to engage in labs. So though we will continue to provide the experiences to our students, I say that to say that pacing across our state, and I'm sure beyond our state, but certainly across our state is a shared challenge. But we continue to work to prepare our students to, to meet with success and mastery on all culminating exams, should they be offered by college board, i.e. the AP exams or the state via regions exam. So the answer is yes.
Okay, and then it's, I'm glad you mentioned the labs. Thank you so much. So is it that cohort A and cohort B repeat the labs, you know, that are given on separate sides? And then Gizmo provides an additional way of doing it?
I'm going to say all of the above. So there, so our Gizmo and talking to our science teachers is something that we want to explore the potential of keeping elements of even when life goes back to normal. Because it's, you know, like plate tectonics, for example, right? Like you can't move plates. It's just there are certain things you can't manipulate. Gizmo allows you to engage actively in labs where you might not like. So though, for example, you know, students could during non pandemic, all students could in real time altogether, you know, you know, test various chemicals, for example. Like I said, the plate tectonics is something you can't do and Gizmo allows that for all. So some of our labs are critical, like the skills and knowledge and experience are so critical that the, the science teachers decide that they're going to have that same lab experience on a cohort A day for all students in AL, you know, cohort A and then MZ cohort B in our remote students. So they'll do it twice in person and have assignments for students to be working on to extend that learning or reflect on that learning on that lab. And then some labs, they don't, they don't do twice, like some labs, you know, you'll be partnered with someone who could be at home with various responsibilities. And then the third option is some labs, all students use Gizmo. And in some labs, you know, students who are remote engage in Gizmo, which again, you're still manipulating things and you are still, you know, conducting analysis and, and working with the data. So it's not just one answer with regard to our labs. I have seen and heard and talked to teachers who've explained doing it differently for different labs based on the skills and their expertise and their experience. You know, using that word that David mentioned earlier, right? Like we're, we're lucky that they are rich in experience, both to the content and, you know, for, you know, and the skills needed as students move on and for the assessments at the end of the year as well.
Well, thank you, because, you know, in, in autumn, you know, we didn't really know how any of these things were going to work out. So that update is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's so refreshing to see and hear from you and, and thank you for sharing your, your experiences. Because as Beth was just saying, it's, it provides us real insight. And I want to thank you and everyone who's working in the buildings, our teachers and staff for your resilience and care and the innovation that Mr. Sotai was speaking about. So, you know, we on the board are here to try and support your success. And I just, you know, as you are here in December and thinking about a lot of things that are very immediate in terms of succeeding under this pandemic. You know, hopefully there are ideas that, that you're surfacing as a team that we can help support, whether that's a policy or a resource that's needed. You know, I hear about how, you know, are there ways that we could assure having the, the number of substitutes needed? You know, I'm curious, actually, is a question, maybe this was clarified already, but with the, you know, the, the flex Wednesdays, does that mean that pullouts for CSE or committees or all sorts of things that are happening during that time? Or is that still happened during the work week? Because I'm curious about things that are developed during this pandemic that maybe should continue going forward. I'm wondering if this is one of those ideas that should be discussed.
Yeah, Michael, and I, you know, I'll, I'll respond to that. So when we think about a lot of the collaboration and the, the professional learning, it's almost all exclusively being delivered during the flex Wednesday. It's inevitable, though, due to the, the volume of CSE meetings and that, that do occur, that we have to have flexibility. We utilize teacher prep periods where possible to schedule those meetings. But it's not viable to be able to align everyone's schedules that needs to be able to be at the table. So there are some pullouts that do occur for those types of, of meetings. The idea about thinking to the future, we've started to have that conversation and thinking about what, you know, the benefit that we have for PLRDs and, and frankly, beginning to think about like how this experience has totally enriched that whole PLRD model. And, and frankly, finding that, that space where we're almost seeing that, like, wanting to be selfish with that time, seeing the power of what we're doing in this, on this window. So when we think about the SEL work, when we think about the diversity and inclusion work with NYU, almost all of that is being scheduled on, on Wednesdays. You know, there's going to be a couple of exceptions, because we can't have all of our partner, our partners from NYU and Castle can't, you know, give every Wednesday to Irvington. But, but realistically, we have that space where we want to rethink that and begin to revision what that may, may look like for us. And whether that is looking at tweaking the PLRD model a little bit to have some larger blocks of time. But, but the value of that dedicated time to be able to provide and create a calendar of professional learning over a long block of time has really proven to be beneficial. There are still some types of PD that regardless, we're going to need to have because we want to have the coaching models still exist, where we have teachers that are meeting with other teachers and shadowing other teachers or experts that are coming in and working with our teachers. So there's some things we won't be able to avoid, but clearly I think this has led to a major shift in our, our practices and our thinking moving forward.
Great, thank you. And just one other quick question. I mean, along those lines, I think to the degree that you're surfacing ways that we can support you in the short term, we are, have and will continue to have a lot of discussion around the Dow's Lane model. But, you know, certainly we want to make sure that we're having the, the kind of conversations that can support success at Main Street School, middle school and high school as well. So, so please keep sharing your ideas and hopefully they surface in a way we can support. And then just one last question or thought is before pandemic, we were close to setting up a model where the board would be able to come and participate or observe, you know, different events or classes in your schools. And, you know, the pandemic has, has certainly disrupted that. But, you know, I love hearing about some of the events. And if there's ever an opportunity for us to be able to attend one of these community building events, please invite us, because I'd love to see, it's great to have the connection with you tonight. And I'd love to have those connections with students as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. I think we'll, we'll go to the trustees who are participating remotely. But just before we do that, I just, just want to echo a couple of things that have been touched on and that Michael said, just to, you know, reiterate, you know, again, you know, thanks to all the administrators for being here. But, you know, to the extent, I'm going to give you a little bit of homework, I guess. To the extent there are, you know, things that you think we could do to help make things easier or better, you know, please continue to think about service ideas, you know, we're here to try to solve problems to the extent we can, you know, given obviously budgetary constraints and everything else. But, you know, please know that you have our support and that, you know, we're always looking for creative ideas to try to solve our problems. And I wanted to echo something that's been talked about a little bit, which is, you know, it sounds like there's some wonderful work going on right now. And especially, I think we've opened Pandora's box, maybe with the use of technology in schools. I think we'll have a robust discussion towards the end of the year about our, the lessons we've learned around that and how we can, you know, both take advantage of some of the, the things we've incorporated into learning and what's working, what's not, and what we want to use going forward. But I think, you know, just to look at some of the lessons that we've learned, you know, such as Dr. Harrison, the example in math about the frequent touch points or other things that have developed during this time that, that we think are good ideas. You know, we, you know, we're going to spend some more time towards the end of the year, I think reflecting on that. But I want, you know, the administrators just to be thinking about that, that that's just, and that the board has been, you know, really thinking about in terms of what value can we take away from this unique experience to further, you know, education when we return, hopefully to a more normal setting. So, you know, I guess I'm putting down, I guess, my marker now that that's a conversation that we look forward to having, you know, towards the end of the year and going forward, because there's been a lot of creativity, a lot of energy, a lot of thought about how things can be reimagined to work in this environment. But again, so we, so that thinking can, you know, hopefully live on. And we'd love to hear about how we can use that going forward. So, you know, less questions for me, but more, you know, comments for now. But so I'll go over to the trustees who are participating remotely for their questions and comments. So, Maura?
Thank you to everyone. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. It means, it means a lot to see you in person. And since we often are masked and kind of come, come to the door, if, if we're even near a school, it just, it is lovely to see your faces. So I, one of my, so I guess this is, this is not really a question, but, but more an observation on the decision to keep Wednesdays as they are. And I'd, I'd say that I, I understand it better, having, having heard the explanation today. And from, from what's been said about the, the lack of substitute availability, keeping, keeping Wednesday afternoons as they are seems like a really important thing to, to hold on to for now, if this, this teaching, teachers' time together and the, the different kinds of, of work that needs, needs to happen will happen. I mean, we, we know that it's a difficult time of year for, so for, for staff health. And I, you know, we've heard, we've heard here tonight and, you know, have, have heard on an ongoing basis just how difficult it is for you guys doing the juggling act to keep schools open every day. So I wanted to thank you for that. And really, I, I mean, if, unless you're, unless you're hearing about it on a regular basis, I don't think it's, it's fully obvious to families just, just how last minute some of these decisions have to be. And so we, we really appreciate you making them and taking the time. And knowing that you're trying to debrief afterward and have lessons learned about how we, it can, can be better. You know, I don't think, I don't think anything feels particularly good to families right now. So we truly, I just, I thank you for that. And I guess I look at this as a, maybe we're seeing the decisions like the hybrid model that don't always seem immediately on the surface to be the right decision have turned out to be, because they are reducing school closures. So, I mean, we're all, we're all very thankful for that. We're very thankful for that. The only other question or, I mean, really, it's not like, like Brian said as well, it may not be a question, but more of a, of a question about pacing in the other schools. You know, where, where perhaps the testing is, is not so much of a high stakes sort of outcome, the way that the regions can be for kids. Or I guess I would, I would be interested in hearing an update later on in the year about how pacing is progressing. So understanding how, how we're moving through the year and if we're making up any time or if there's still that lag, knowing that, knowing that in order to support your efforts next year and also each of the students, that there are, you know, there are, I, I think maybe other families have, have seen on kids' report cards where certain standards, say NA. And some of those would be right at this point in the first, the first reporting period, those would, those would not be available yet. Others perhaps would be. So be interesting to hear about that as the year goes on. And so that we can look at what resources we need in order to, to try and to accelerate things for the kids, if possible. Thank you. That's all.
Thanks, Maura.
Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, just hopefully a quick comment and quick question. First, a comment just to say thank you to all the administrators. We appreciate all that you're doing. And I think most specifically, I think Joyce sort of hit on it. And it was a reminder that you're taking in the emotions of faculty, of families, of students, of other administrators, and you are sort of bearing that burden and carrying a lot of that on your shoulders. So that's not an easy position to be in. So we appreciate that and thank you for all that hard work and that emotional struggle probably that you're facing every day and bearing all of that responsibility. My question is, I guess Juliette, just quickly, how are colleges assessing students this year, right? So now we're sort of going through almost a year and a half of high school students of not having these norms, not pacing as well, not just the lower grades with the upper grades. So what are they looking at and, you know, how is this sort of changing their maybe requirements even going forward, which then may shape what we do going forward as a school and how we're preparing students?
Well, I know, you know, our counselors have been talking to students about there are more students, when there are more colleges on the, that are not testing this year. So when you go to the no fair testing site, that kind of lists all of the colleges that are not looking at test scores, there are more and more schools. Now, whether or not those colleges will remain on that list when the pandemic ends has yet to be seen. But colleges are investing more time in looking at transcripts and interviews are coming back. More students where interviews were optional, and they still are in large part. There are more colleges now advocating for, you know, the local representative in your community to interview you. And that was less popular pre pandemic. So there have been some shifts like that, that our counselors have been talking to students about.
And then are we shifting in terms of our support to help students with that interview process that maybe would have been optional before and seems more important nowadays? How have, how have we made that shift?
Yes, when I mentioned early, earlier, Calendly, it, you know, has been slow to transition. Like as we said, you know, we're, we're learning from our experiences and we're identifying issues and, and trying to remedy them. So Calendly is something more recent that we purchased with the support of, you know, of Jay, our technology director and our school counseling team, who is recognizing that students, you know, were, you know, in the, in the pandemic and some students being remote, it was more challenging like to call the office to make an appointment for those students who weren't in. Those students were fully remote, for example. And so what Calendly has done is much like your doctor's appointments, where very often you can go online and see your doctor's calendar and make an appointment. Our students can now do that with their school counselor to, you know, meet one on one or virtually in small groups, whether it's to talk about, you know, looking at their lists on Naviance and trying to identify a school that, that fits better, especially since students are not going to visit schools on campus anymore. Their virtual tours, they're meeting virtually with representatives. So the whole experience of finding, you know, your college is very different. I'm sure many of us, as you reflect, it's like the feeling you got when you're on campus. And so that's something that our students haven't been able to do. Or if they are able to go to the campus, they're not seeing students walking around. It's a very different experience. So our counselors have been working individually and in small groups. And we've been exploring kind of new ways to support our students in this, in this new setting and this new, especially our juniors and seniors as they prepare for college.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
Thanks. Jane, if you now have any comments, feel free to time in, otherwise we will continue on.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work you're doing and all the thoughtfulness that's going along with it. And I have a question about the flex Wednesdays. I, I know as a former teacher how important they are. Is there a menu that you have a couple of the professional developments going on at a time? Or does everyone get the same PD?
So Jane, we.
So Jane, we, we structure that a lot of different ways because we really want teachers to be able to select what's going to be most meaningful to them. So on any given Wednesday, and I, I think that Chris once shared with the board, I send out a weekly email to all the staff about what's happening both within our district and within the region in any given week. So it's typical on a Wednesday that one or more of our instructional coaches might be offering learning sessions. And those are often one hour sessions that are done twice, once at one o'clock and once at two o'clock. It's also typical for either a Google PD team member or one of our vendors to be offering something specific about a particular software application, you know, Perdeck or whatever, whatever that might be. So those are pretty regular that go on. And then in addition, at the building levels, things are also scheduled that way. So it's really a mix. There will be times, like I know at Main Street recently, they had a session that all staff members went to about a particular software application. Many of our departments or grade levels will also use that time to meet or instructional leaders will use that time to meet in addition to presenting learning sessions to meet with teachers. So it's a wide, wide variety of options and, and my colleagues, my building level colleagues, if there's anything you want to add to that, please.
You also share a Google Calendar that Mary and the district created. And the shared Google Calendar is accessible to all admins and staff members. So all of the events and the meets and the Zoom links are all on that calendar.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I guess we'll now return to our regularly scheduled programming and continue with the presentation. For those administrators who have other time commitments, again, thank you and happy holidays to you. For those who are able to stay, we welcome you to continue and we'll, we'll circle back. So Dr. Harrison, back over to you.
Great. And again, thank you colleagues so very much. I, I know that a number of you have other conflicts and events going on. So, you know, I, I know Andrea, you've been summoned to stay on board and Liza, if you could stay, that'd be super. Otherwise colleagues feel free to, to head on. And thank you for your time and important sharing. I think your anecdotes and your voices really lend it a lot to this important conversation tonight. So Mary, I think we're going to pick up where we left off a little while ago after that, but I think was a very enriching experience. But I think you're still on here. So let me get moving.
There we go.
Yeah.
All right. So we know that the conversation about the Dowsling model or models has been something that we've been looking at pretty much, I would say, since July and continue to look at. So when we looked at the AMP model for grades two and three, and now that we're reaching a, a place where we want to make recommendations, we looked first at the benefits and we're, we're aware of some of these and just go over them quickly with you. More consistent contact with teachers and peers. We know for young students in a cohort A, if they're with their teacher on Tuesday and they don't see that teacher again until Monday, it's a long time. More instructional time in content areas, the reworking of the schedule that Andrea and Liza did provided more focused time in areas of ELA, mathematics, social studies and science. We were also looking to reduce screen time. As Andrea mentioned earlier, our youngest learners struggle with the screen time. And so having them onsite meant that FaceTime every day and then the asynchronous time, the part of the day when they're not in school would not necessarily be in a Google Meet. It could be independent work as well. And reduced exposure to others over a 48 hour period because they're in school for a shorter period of time. Some of the, the drawbacks that we felt in that was the increased risk of quarantine because if students are in every day, just while that I was in Tuesday and I'm not back in until Monday means I don't see my teacher for a long time. It also means I'm not exposed to as many people as regularly. So when we do get a positive case, we go back 48 hours. And the cohort model allows for that 48 hours so that we end up, when we do need to quarantine a group of students or adults, that it's fewer. We know that there's decreased social time with peers because of the loss of lunch and recess. And there were several parents who expressed a concern about that. We also are very, very cognizant that our families are, are struggling through this. We're all struggling through this to make it work. Many of you have figured out how to make it work and expressed to us, you know, I, I got it. It's working for my family. Please don't change things. So we heard, we heard that. And then we also knew that there would be a significant increased cost with additional cleaning and bussing. So we did several parent surveys and as Chris mentioned earlier, I know we've been reaching out to you a lot and some of you have said, no more surveys. We value your voice and that's why we keep asking. So this is back to the survey that we did in November where we asked if parents were in support of a change to an AM PM model for all grades at Dowsling. And with the greens here representing the yes and the reds representing the no's. And, you know, just as a quick look, you can see that there isn't a significant difference there. And as Chris had mentioned earlier in the year, if we were going to make this change, we were hoping to look for a very significant degree of community support for one model or another so that it would be really clear which way to go. We didn't get that in November. We were looking at much closer to, to half and half. So then in December, we looked to do a follow-up survey and our follow-up survey was sent to the parents who replied to the previous survey that they were not in support of the model. And we reduced that survey to our grade two and grade three parents. Those would be the ones that would have the most impact from this change. So they were the ones we went to. We sent that survey to 141 families. We received 87 responses. So it's not a huge level of response, but it's certainly significant enough that we wanted to look at what those families were telling us. And one of the questions that we asked was what was the reason that you had for not supporting the survey the last time we asked you? And we felt that this was an important question to ask because we had ideas about why we thought parents weren't, either were or were not supporting it. But we felt we needed to hear from parents themselves because if there were challenges that parents were having that we could help with, we wanted to know what those were. So you'll see here the numbers, knowing that we had a little more than 80 responses. You see a lot more than 80 in terms of the bars here. Parents had the option of checking off as many of these as they felt were important. They weren't picking just one. So you can see that there were a large number of families who felt that the current model is working very well for their child. We also had a large number of families who said they had a schedule that works for us and they didn't want to see change, a change in it. A little bit less, but still a significant number of people felt that a change in schedule would create problems with their own work schedules. And we know that parents are out there trying to balance so, so many things. So that was what we, one of the things we wanted to find out. And then last, that parents were expressing that a change in schedule would create problems for them with regard to childcare. We again asked, at this point in time, would you support moving to an AM PM model for grades two and three? And again, I want to stress that these are parents who said they were not in support the first time. So we asked, do you now support it? So the green bars represent people who changed from I don't support it to I do support it. The red bar represents families who told us that they still do not support it. And the yellow represents families who indicate that they are at this point undecided.
So, you know, as we've proceeded through this process, Mary kind of really mapped out the journey for us. And now we think about the conversations that we've had along the way, the parent forums that we facilitated, two targeted surveys. And it was really important to me, as I had indicated throughout several meetings, that I really wanted to see that super majority of parent support to be able to inform the recommendation, to be able to look to make this change. I know and that we've had engagement with our faculty at, at Dowsling. Of course, we're working very closely in partnership with Liza and Andrea and we see benefits as Mary outlined to an AM PM transition for grades two and three. But at the same time, we recognize and acknowledge those challenges that are there. So when we think about where we are today, based upon the data review that we've seen that in many ways was determined to be inconclusive, while assuring in some ways to see that our students are, aren't far behind, that they're entering the school year about where we would expect them to be and looking at our trend data. When we think about the health and safety component of this equation and less risk to our students, but also notably to our staff, because as I said before, the fragility in our operation is the availability of staff. And those that are actually the greatest risk in this AM PM model actually become the staff members because they're being exposed to twice as many students than they would on a given day. So we are greater likelihood to be able to see teachers being quarantined and we know that will shut our schools down as we've learned twice already this year. And I would like to add, when we look at what's happening across the region, and I'm talking to my superintendent colleagues that we're meeting in large groups, two, if not three times each week. Those shutdowns that you're seeing in so many of our schools and in many districts with, at a frequency much greater than what we've experienced here in Irvington, almost every single one of those cases is because of staff shortages. And I worry about landing in that spot. But to come back to that initial place where I was looking for that decision point, looking for a data point to be able to say that this decision is right for us, it really came down to the, the wellbeing and the ability for families to be able to navigate this shift in model mid-year. And frankly, the data as Mary presented presents too many hardships for families right now. To look at the number of families that weren't supported for any number of reasons, but to look at the hardships that may be present, to look at the number of parents that indicated that it would pose hardships on their employment. To think of the families that would struggle with childcare arrangements because of this. It's because of that factor most significantly that I don't think we can move forward today. But what I am committed to is what we've talked about throughout this evening. And I think there's been a theme to so much of the conversation, whether it's the points that Mary has made, points that I've made, that our administrative colleagues have made tonight. This has been a constant year of reflection. Every single experience, we're stepping back and we're learning for it, from it, we're making adjustments. You know, you see all those COVID letters? It was stated earlier that every single one of those cases, we step back and we debrief, we learn from it. Every single class experience, every single observation that an administrator has with a teacher, every single meeting, we're looking at what we can do better and what we can do differently. So as we look to the future, we are going to continue to reevaluate what's happening in the schools. We're going to look at mid-year benchmark data to look at that continuing set of data to see how our students are progressing through the course of the year. We're going to look to any shifts in Department of Health guidelines. You know, I would say if we were having this conversation a week ago, a lot of us would have thought there was such hope and optimism with the vaccine coming out and, and how that was going to help us be able to return to normalcy more quickly. But now we're talking about the new strain of the virus and what that impact is going to have. And the conversations about what's happened in the UK and now it's in other places in Europe. And the very real questions, and I believe our own governor said it today, we need to know if it's in New York, we need to know if it's in the United States and what those impacts are going to have on us today. So where we may have envisioned loosening in the restrictions around attendance density, social distancing and those other requirements that we are following so closely in our schools, it seems that we're going to be in a holding pattern and I hope that it doesn't get more restrictive. But we're going to continue to analyze the community feedback. As the community knows, we administered a comprehensive survey that went to all parents in the last week. We are facilitating a version of that survey is going to go to our faculty and staff and then our secondary students. And we're going to use that to inform what we're able to do in the future. You know, right now we're thinking about the AM PM model. But we also know that we have other structures for attendance, right? So we have AM PM model, we have cohort A, cohort B and cohort C. You know, when we begin to analyze our attendance after the holidays, you never know what could be presented to us. You know, I was in a meeting today with one of my superintendent colleagues where he shared a brilliant idea. And an idea that we began to explore quite a bit and thinking about what happens if in-person enrollment begins to drop off because of illness, because of, of family concerns and that we have more seats available in the classroom. Is there an exploration of a fourth cohort potentially, those that elect for four days a week? We have to see what opportunities come to us. And I share that idea, not as a promise of something that's going to happen, but that idea that we have to continue to be flexible in our thinking. We have to look to the data that's available and not just looking at survey data, not just looking at academic data, but attendance data may give us other opportunities as well. And we're going to see shifts, we're going to see changes that are going to occur in the new year. Whether for the good or bad with the virus, whether there's going to be changes in patterns of attendance that are going to lead us in a different direction. And we have to be, remain open to reviewing each of those and looking for other opportunities. So as we continue to move forward, we know that there's going to be other needs. I heard a number of the trustees tonight saying to my administrative colleagues, please tell us what you want. Let's keep this dialogue going. And I appreciate that level of support. They appreciate that level of support. You know, right now there's so many different shifts that are, that are happening that I'm not sure what the next need is going to be. But I think that survey is going to tell us some information about what we need to reflect on and change operationally, instructionally. But one need that is present today that I'll tell the board and we've talked about it before is increased technology support. Technology is center point in what we're doing. And whether that is the physical technology break and fix, traditional tech support or instructional support, there is need for more of that today. And we need to be able to adapt and be able to shift to provide that because our teachers need it. There's other technologies and instructional resources that are needed. You heard reference from two of my colleagues this evening about microphones posing a challenge in the classroom. So I, I want to say that we, we see it, we hear it. When I've been in class meets over the last couple of weeks, it's obvious, right? It's, it's hard to be able to hear for a student at home when a student across the classroom is asking a question. So we're not sitting there on our hands and saying, yeah, this stinks. This is tough. They know that we just have to work through it. We're trying to get different types of microphones. There's been some incredibly innovative approaches where teachers and administrators have sent us pictures, videos of them creating their own boom mics and a wireless mic on, on a yardstick and they're holding it out across the classroom, keeping so, social distance, miking kids. We've been trying to order devices, different microphones, they're just simply not available. There's limited supplies out there. Jay Schrammacher, our great director of technology, has acquired a number of like snowball mics that are often used like in podcasts that we have a number of them that we're now piloting use in the district because that's what we've been able to acquire that would best meet our needs. So we need to continue to seek opportunities there and we need to continue to find more resources to support families. So you heard our administrative, elementary administrators tonight talk about the SEL programs that are being delivered. We actually have survey information that went out from each school in the last week and we'll continue to push it out after the holidays where we have and we'll continue to push it out after the holidays, where we have services through Feed Westchester, where we can provide fresh food and produce on an ongoing basis to families. Our social workers are doing a great job outreach to them. Our P T S A Bulldog Family Fund has been amazing in the support they're providing to our families, and also really to so many community members that have reached out and have made impressive donations that are keeping a lot of folks going. And I also want to give accolades to our partners in the village. Joe Archino and his staff are doing an incredible job in supporting community members as well. So, associated with all this, and when we think of these asks, and the requests and the challenges, we can't hide from the fact that there's lots of expenses, Carol. And we've been giving some updates along the way. So Carol, do you want to share where we are today?
Sure. So there's obviously good news and there's bad news with this reopening. We've had some extra expenses, and we've had some opportunities. So I'll try to explain the differences. So as far as things that we've not budgeted, I call these unbudgeted costs. We've talked throughout this presentation about the P P E, or Personally Protective Equipment, gloves, masks, all kinds of things, face masks. We have paper that covers desks at a secondary level, we put our polycarbonate dividers, Juliet talked about it in labs, we have it between teachers and students. So that was a very expensive endeavor. We are pretty much in a good shape now with our supplies, so I don't anticipate too much. I put a little extra, some extra money to carry us through the end of the year, so I'm hoping that number will be our, kind of close to our ending number for the year. Technology, we purchased Chromebooks to get to the one-to-one, microphones, webcams. We expanded bandwidth, so that we could make sure that we're not slowed down on our network. So that was another expense. We did offset that with funds that we'd already budgeted for this year, that we weren't going to be using in some areas. Some places, it's a bit of a risk, you know, we didn't replace desktops, laptops, monitors, things like that, which were scheduled this year, so that's going to all have to be pushed to next year. And you'll hear that in our budget presentations. Transportation for our midday runs for the K one program, that was, you know, we have, we're running those buses for an hour every day, and that has a cost to that. In our budget this year, we had cut two monitors from our runs that had been, had lower ridership, but we did not do that this year. We want to make sure that the students are protected and wearing the masks, so we have kept all monitors this year. Facilities, you know, and I know that our principals gave shout-outs to their staff, I do need to give a shout-out to our facilities crew. They have had a phenomenal year in terms of their flexibility and cooperation. They, you know, we have asked them to do all kinds of things, pit crews, jump on the bus, clean the bus, clean classrooms, you know, in between the K one. So we've had to move people around and be very flexible with that, but it's been working. We do have a use of overtime and subs to fill in those shifts and make sure that we're actually getting everything clean, especially when there's anything that's, you know, at all suspicion or exposure. And then finally, we've talked throughout the presentation about monitors that we're using to cover teachers that are assigned to be remote, or have been quarantined, or are working from home, but students are here. So that is another cost to us. You may notice that some of these same costs were listed in the previous presentation, but some of the numbers are different. I, you know, I continually work to update the numbers based on the most up-to-date information that I have. So this is, this is my, you know, guess at it right now, in this part of the year. If you go to the next slide. So then we have other unbudgeted costs this year that really don't, you know, may or may not have anything to do with COVID, but one of them is the district initiative for the N Y U Services for our Diversity and Equity Initiative. And, you know, that's a large number, was offset by the P T S A and the I F and the I F A. So it's going to be a cost to us of about $22,000. We are looking at potentially hiring still some more technology staff for this year and/or next year, but this, trying to think about it maybe even for this year. So if we can work it within the budget, we really do need that. And then there's this cost of possible testing. So if we become a yellow zone, we are going to face, you know, the idea that we have to test 20% of our staff and student population. I've done some estimating here about what it would cost to do that. It's hard, because you don't exactly know the scenarios that will present us, and how we're going to do it, when it occurs. And the government keeps changing their mind on what it entails and how often you have to do this. But I'm estimating somewhere between $4,000 to $10,000 to do it. And then if we also wanted to have, if we didn't have the tests, like sometimes, some school districts are saying the Department of Health was not actually supplying them tests, so we've found a source that can provide them for us, but then it would be about $10,000 more in that situation. We also looked at the idea of doing ongoing pool testing, which basically would just test the rotating 100 individuals at two intervals, just to stay on top of it, it's something we ever wanted to explore. And I estimate that to be about $4,000 if we wanted to do that, every time we wanted to do it. So these are just some things to keep in mind. We have not done the testing in the yellow zone, we're not a yellow zone, I want to make that clear. We have not been designated a yellow zone, but we are just being prepared, we have contracts in place, we have a process in place, everything is ready to go in case we become one, with the intent that schools stay open.
And I've had to provide a level of clarity, as we've indicated, we definitely have had planning sessions and have plans in place to be able to administer testing. Should we be identified as a yellow zone? The reason, we believe we can do it in two sessions, but the reason we put that four sessions out there as a precaution, we don't know what conditions we're going to face needing to administer them, if testing protocols could change, that if there's concerns about weather that's going to force us to go from a drive-through model to an indoor model that's going to slow down our flow for folks that we're going to be able to test because of the folks having to get out of cars, come in and out of buildings, so on and so forth. So that's why we provided that range. But I want to highlight, not only are we prepared in a model that we've identified a great partner, and a thank you to our community member, Adam Wallach, and his organization that is working with us in all of this. But in looking to acquire tests, should the Department of Health not be able to deliver upon their obligation to provide us the tests? So we have the resources to be able to acquire them, so we can have the testing done to keep schools open. And then that ongoing pool testing, if we find ourselves in a situation where we believe that we want to do pool testing, where we're looking at a random sort of representative group of each of our schools, so that would be looking at 25 individuals at each school being tested, an assortment of different students that are representative of our student population, so that'd be different grades, different cohorts, and then a mix of different staff members throughout the school, so you get a representative sampling of that particular school. So if all of a sudden you identified that there were positive cases within a school, you would look at where those cases were in patterns, and then you would do targeted additional testing, which then would expand these costs, of course, looking at those other layers of testing that you would want to explore. But I just want to give those details to show the level of thought and planning that we've gone into this, to want to take every step possible to keep our schools open. And that's whether it's a yellow zone with state support or without state support. And if we're not a yellow zone, and we have concern about health and welfare in our schools, we've mapped out a plan where we could do pool testing to be able to monitor that health and well-being in our schools.
Okay, so then also there are some favorable budget variances that we have that really don't have anything to do with, well, some a little bit to do with COVID, but not totally. So when I budgeted for transportation for this year, there was a lot of uncertainty about the bids that we were going to receive. So I did budget a little bit extra in terms of the funds we might need for that, knowing that we can't possibly be short with that. We have had fewer field trips, actually no field trips, so that money is available, and less athletic busting. So those are some positive variances there. Unemployment is a negative variance. We are seeing way more unemployment claims, part of them I am contesting heartily, because they are people that could be working. We do have substitutes on that list that should be here, so I'm contesting them. But it's a very daunting process right now. Unemployment has over a million protests for the unemployment claims that you have, so I don't have a lot of hope that there's going to be a lot of reviews done, but we'll see what's going on. I mean, I'm contesting just about everything that I don't think it makes any sense. Special ed tuitions, we've had some favorable variance there, we've had a few students that actually moved, and we've had some other ones where placement changes or didn't match to the budget. So that's been on the good side. And health insurance premiums, when I look at that for the year right now, it looks like we're a little bit lower, partly due to some retirees that were on a waiver and didn't take the insurance, and then others, just in general, the mix that we have really between our retirees and our active, and who takes a waiver, does not. So there's been a bit of a variance there. So there's some positive news, not all negative news, I'm hopeful. I'm going to be starting to heavily look at the revenue picture now, which is the other piece of the model. You know, we have still yet to see, I know you're going to hear all about the new aid package, but we have yet to see the previous aid package. We had not seen our pandemic aid from, that was from last year, we have not seen that approved. We submitted that a long time ago, we had to resubmit it again, because they changed the requirement, we did that, we still haven't even seen the approval, no acknowledgement, nothing. And if everybody recalls that pandemic aid that we supposedly got, otherwise known as ESER or GEAR, that was offset by a cut that Cuomo made in our state aid. So it was really a wash. There wasn't additional aid for us, and I suspect that same thing's going to happen this year. I'm hopeful that we'll get additional aid, but somehow, I'm not too optimistic there. So there's a whole revenue piece that we have to look at. We did get a little bit less aid in transportation, because we used less last year, and there were some other places where our reimbursable aids are going to be lower because of our costs that were a little bit lower last year. So all in all, it's not all bad, but it's not all great either. So that's kind of where I'm at with this.
Thank you, Carol. So again, this is another position where we keep responding to the conditions, we keep planning ahead, we keep learning from experiences, looking to be flexible with our budget, just as we are with every other aspect of our operation. But here again, we have to underscore the uncertainty that lies before us this year and next. So when we go back to our budget process, that was drawn out because of the pandemic and the extended timelines, and the delayed vote, and the new voting process, you remember that we took a lot of responsible steps that built in strategies for us to navigate these very challenges. So as a result of our shared leadership trustees, we're in a better place than we would have been, had we not taken that level of care in our planning. But we have to underscore, there's challenges that are before us. We still don't know how New York State is going to make ends meet in this fiscal year. We do not know what they're going to do for us or to us next year. So if you've done your reading on this new stimulus bill that has yet to be signed by our president, that we're waiting on that, that if that does get signed, that there isn't direct aid that is going to states. So what does that mean? It means that there are still massive, multi-billion dollar gaps in the state budget. And education is the single largest component of that budget. So we have to be mindful, there are still dire straits ahead for the state of New York and for public education in the state of New York. As Carol indicated, the monies that came in the CARES Act, the first stimulus package, it really supplanted cuts in state aid. And the vehicle by which monies are going to be administered to schools are going to be able, are going to follow the same federal funding structures that were used in the first stimulus program. So that means proportionately, because we are an affluent school community, we're going to see a smaller amount of money, and it fits right into an equation that the state already looks at. So Carol's suggestion that you could see this aid being supplanted once again by federal dollars is a reality, and something we should be concerned about. If there's going to be advocacy on this front, it needs to be headed towards not only Albany but to D C, to make sure that monies come back to state of New York, to make sure that we can keep our state whole and our public schools whole. So as we think about the discussion tonight, there's been a lot of optimism when we've talked about the great work that's happened in our schools, the enthusiasm of our students, the growth that we're seeing in the classrooms, the tremendous commitment from our teachers, our administrators, every single employee in the district, the, I can't even really verbalize, the level of support and gratitude and encouragement that we hear from parents is just so critical. But as we think about this, just as we started the program earlier tonight, if you noticed, I was running a slideshow, because we have to focus on the beauty of what happens in our schools all the time. We have to think of the magic, that which is facilitated by our teachers, that which is inspired by our students. There are still incredible things that are happening in our schools. We still have music that's occurring. We have virtual experiences, and if you go on to our social media, you can see these stories. On the right is a video of our band students that are having an interactive experience with a musician remotely. Our word language programs still continue, with our students focusing on dialogue and conversation, and speaking the languages with one another in authentic experiences. Thinking about those remote experiences that are occurring with authors visiting our classrooms and students engaging with them. Look at those kids' faces. Look at the enthusiasm as they're engaging with this author. When we think about the work that our teachers are doing in the classroom to navigate distance learning, hybrid learning on the left, one of our amazing teachers sitting there with kids that are learning at home, she's sitting on a camera, kids at home are seeing her through Google Meet on the live stream in the classroom, while the students in the classroom are engaged. Teachers working one-on-one with kids in close settings with the polycarbonate or Plexiglas-type dividers between them. The examples that we referenced before from science labs, how the science labs are still happening, science is still coming to life for our children in our classrooms. When we think about our teachers going above and beyond, hands-on learning experiences, you know, in Irvington, we've always had the Hour of Code activities. We really kicked it off like seven, eight years ago, engaging kids district-wide in coding experiences. We couldn't do it in the same way. What happened? Our teachers, our students came together, produced the video to promote our code, provide resources, and we pushed it out community-wide, to be able to still inspire that level of engagement, still finding the opportunities for our kids to have hands-on experiences in the classrooms, but to do so in a socially-distanced, healthy, safe manner. When we think about it, we're thinking about maintaining that level of spirit, that level of culture in our schools. Buddy the Bulldogs out there, wearing his face mask, greeting our students. Our student athletes, where permitted, are still competing and representing our schools. Well, we heard about our debate team, and go to our social media and read that story, wonderful accomplishments. But you think about those school-wide community-building experiences. When I look at that slide, I just go across the top, and you look at a student clapping, and you look at another one with an expression of awe on her face. That's what we're about here in Irvington. And we can have all of the challenges before us, but this is what we're here for. This is what we're focused on. The stories are out there, we're going to keep sharing, let's focus on the positive, let's be strong as a community. Hit us up on Facebook and Instagram, we're posting things constantly, and we want to hear your stories, so make sure you complete those surveys, even though we're sending many of them out, your feedback is necessary and it is valued. But we're here every day for a given reason and a given purpose, and it's what's on that screen. It's about every kid, every single day. And we have an amazing team of educators, those who inspire me, and that I am proud to call colleagues and friends, that are making the difference in our children's lives each and every day. So, Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Now turn to the rest of the trustees, see if there are questions on the second half of the presentation. So, Dave?
I have a couple of questions. One around the COVID-19, and the second around finances. Yeah, I've been saying some of the same things that you were sharing earlier, Dr. Harrison, about, you know, that in the midst of increasing community spread, we haven't really found there to be spread within our school district. So a couple of questions on there. The first one is, it seems to be that the district is doing an incredible job with initial contact tracing, and to see that it's happening on a fairly regular basis. regular basis. I'm very impressed and appreciative that you're doing it because it seems like the county is a bit overwhelmed by by what's going on. I'm just curious what follow up there is once you've done that initial contact tracing. I mean, we've had a string of cases in the middle school, for example. Is there any analysis to see, you know, at the middle school if there is spread?
Yeah, so without actually doing any kind of wide scale testing, we're not able to determine if there is. But our nurses remain in regular communication with many of the families. And we are advised that we encourage every family, if a child is quarantined, we encourage everyone to go and be tested. And the vast majority of those individuals are tested. And we haven't had a single case where someone has come back and tested positive. So we do monitor tho those particular cases. We just expanded this week with the middle school case, enhanced our communications in and around our guidance to families. So going back to our very first instance back in September at Dow's Lane, when we did have that first closure, it was very important to me that we have that Irvington personal touch in our process, that we have the personal outreach to families, that we gave them guidance. We have, as you can imagine, all kinds of systems and guidelines that we follow internally with scripts that we utilize for communication with families. But just with this last go around, we actually now follow up with a written communication to each family that where a child is quarantined. We're giving them specific guidance in writing of the quarantine period that that is required by the Department of Health, resources to be able to understand what quarantining looks like, what close contact looks like, providing them the related Department of Health guidance, and then giving them resources through state ed, giving them guidance to look for phone calls from contact tracers with a 518 area code. So we're trying to facilitate the process the best we can. Again, we haven't seen any cases that have come up where there has been spread. And in fact, we have seen cases where an initial test through a rapid antigen test came back as positive, yet individuals went and then had a follow up PCR tests or tests, and they've all come up negative. And in those cases, Department of Health, we would presume that it was a negative case, right? We know about the large error, range of error that exists in the rapid antigen tests. But once someone is determined to be positive, Department of Health won't back off of that. So we've had situations where we've had individuals that have been quarantined and potentially a whole entire class and a teacher that was quarantined, where it's possible that it was a false positive on an initial test. When we think about the formal contact tracing, it's hit or miss from the state end. Our folks at Westchester End are rather diligent, but the contact tracing is handled at a state level. So that gets filtered out into a state database. And we've had a early on, a couple of cases where there's bad information relayed that we had to intervene and get to the right people in the state to have it clarified. But it's hit or miss. We hear times when folks say they got phone calls within a couple of days. I know some people very closely that didn't get phone calls for an extended period of time. When we get that information, I reach out to my contacts in Department of Health or and and tell them specifically. And then I've heard the calls were made within a day or two. But they're they're overwhelmed. We've gone from a process early on where when we hasn't had a positive case, we called one of the dedicated lines for school. We sat there with our our whole team that processes each and every case in the school district, and we talked through the case with them. They gave us actual guidance. But now schools are essentially operating as, I would say, the Department of Health, implementing the Department of Health guidelines. We don't even speak to somebody on the phone unless there's some real critical situation, that we provide them reports in writing, spreadsheets that are generated for all the internal contact tracing that we do. We provide them with, they need test results from the positive lab positive positive individual. We give them that information. They can confirm receipt of it. If there's any particular questions they have, we hear the questions. Otherwise, Department of Health runs with it. So they don't have the staffing or the hours in the day to sit and give us the guidance that they did in September today.
Okay. Thank you for that. The second part to the question is, with the with the districts that have been required to do the the surveillance testing, I've seen just angrily a big city nearby that had their district very minimal spread when they tested hundreds and hundreds of people.
Yep.
And yet another district near us, which had over 10% of its students when they did the testing. So, you know, as you've said several times, it's really, as far as we know, there's not spread, but but there's limitation in terms of particularly the asymptomatic spread. I have no idea whether other trustees would would be supportive of this. But if there was a scenario in which the board was supportive, what is the administration's thought about potentially doing the pool testing that you shared information about, even if we weren't required to? For example, a scenario might be coming out of the break in in early January doing pool testing.
It would absolutely be a consideration. I think we would need another round of communication. So if you recall going back over the past month with the support of my administrative colleagues, we really sought to get parent consent for students to be tested. And that was conditional with it. It was in a yellow zone environment. So we have, out of a district of, let's say roughly 1,750 students, we have somewhere between 1,000 and 1,100 confirmations right now. So when we think about having to test 20% of in person learners and employees, you know, we're looking at a number, but it's going to be ballpark of 400 people. And so in doing that with having, you know, 1,000 or 1,100 students, we're good to go, right? We can do the random sorts, identify individuals and assign testing. So if we were to look at a different model, we'd have to outline the plan for doing it, which we have the framework for. We'd have to commit the funding for it, but we would have to go through a whole new communication process and consent process because the consent that we have gained is not for this purpose.
All right.
But is it viable? Yes.
All right. I mean, I certainly put it to the board to reflect on if that's might be something we're interested in doing because we we only know about folks who call us and say they've tested positive and not about any asymptomatic spread. So if others want to weigh in, that would be great. In the but to ask about the finance question, I got lost a little bit. When you said that, I understand, I've heard and understood that the aid that the federal government gave us, the CARES Act, that the the state took away a similar amount that your district would be getting from the state aid. But you're saying they took that aid away. We've applied to get the the CARES Act aid and haven't been getting it. So at the end of the day, are you saying that that we're down relative to what we would have expected this year?
Well, I would hope by the end of the year, we would have that aid. It's it's like when you apply for Title I or IDEA money, you actually have to apply for it. It's processed by New York State on behalf of the government, of the federal government. So I would assume that it's it will come. It's just odd that it hasn't yet. You know, that it hasn't come yet and we haven't even had an approved grant. So the grant office has been very slow. And you know, I will, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't say this, but SED has not even been working in their offices. They work remote in an area where I don't even know if the COVID rate is as high as it is down here. So it's interesting that we're all working to do everything, but they're not processing applications. So I mean, and from an advocacy point of view, we we need to know that we're going to have that money this year. I'd like to know where I stand.
Right.
So we haven't, there's been a lot of grants that haven't been gone, haven't been approved yet. So.
So it sounds like along with all the other numbers we'll be tracking during the budget season, that's that's one.
We will get that money. I'm counting on it right at the moment. But it, you know, whenever you're putting federal money into the hands of the state, it's an extra layer of.
So Carol, for a point of clarity, how much money are we talking about?
About $68,000.
So I I say that as a point of reference. So $68,000 within the context of our roughly $65 million budget.
Right.
But so, and we're counting on that money. But what I want to say is is a message that should be like, should resonate and and be sounded out across the entire state. Think about some of our neighbors, just a handful of miles away, where rather than $68,000, you're talking several hundred thousand dollars or millions of dollars.
I also just.
And they don't have that money yet either.
Yeah. And I also just brought it up because with the new bill being passed and everybody is very optimistic about, you know, this aid, it it won't be that great for us. I just have that feeling that it won't be that great for us. And I just want to set expectations realistically so we know what we're getting into. Maybe it'll be good. Maybe I'm wrong. I'm hoping.
Yeah. Well, it's great to see the, thank you for showing the balance. We know that there's a whole set of other figures we'll we'll be hearing about to tell us overall, as you said, with the with revenue. I just want to indicate, as I have even before the pandemic, support for instructional support for technology instruct, well, support for technology instruction on the one hand. But on the other hand, as we go into budget season, you know, I think we're down on enrollment a little bit. We're up on staffing a fair amount over the last few years. So I am definitely paying attention to that and will be curious to to see how you're assessing and analyzing that.
Yeah. So when we talk about it, you know, there's definitely that call for support. And we're trying to take a data driven approach to that. And we've been meeting with our IT team. And we have another meeting right after break, where we're actually monitoring help desk data, the types types of issues, the frequencies of issues, and then comparing data and staffing to other districts and looking at the rate response rate and trying to see where that point is where we fall into a comfort level of the amount of open work tickets that we should have, that manage things that aren't going to be impacting the the actual quality of instruction or the instructional experience. So we're going to be using data to actually inform the recommendation that we're going to make on on that front. The one thing that we have to keep in mind also related to staffing, so where we know that staffing is up in some areas because of deliberate choices that we've made and investments that we've made as a school district, one looking at the need for another social worker, which, right, was a two year process, philosophical discussion, review of data related to student needs and social work services, a shift from outsourced contracted athletic training staff to hiring our own athletic trainer. We made some conscious decisions there. We where we knew there there was going to be a headcount, an increase in the full time equivalency of employees. Where we're going to see some challenge, though, in the future, is when we look at all of the the monitors that we've hired just to get by bare bones operations and Carol had a figure of roughly 160 some thousand dollars. Well, if we return to normalcy and those positions are no longer needed, we have to keep in mind that we're going to carry forward potentially unemployment obligations. So where we're thinking about, you know, where student enrollment is, where FTE counts are for employees, when now we're going to see an increased exposure for unemployment insurance moving forward for the foreseeable future because of the needs that are present today.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think that's, speaking to that, the there is exposure every time we add to our FTE. So I think that's something that we want to agree. We've talked about together for a number of years, being very careful about it, I think, more so than ever.
You got it.
Thank you. Jane? You're on mute.
Hi. I just want to say that I really appreciated the slideshow and to see the kids. You could feel they were smiling underneath their masks. And I just want to say that although they're in school only a few hours a day, that we can't overlook the importance of that small class size and the one teacher with so few T, so few students really can make a big impact on their learning. So I just don't want to forget about that. That's it.
All right. In a minute, we'll move on to the community comment portion. So if you have comments, please put your name and address in the Q and A in Zoom and you'll be recognized. Just wanted to thank Dr. Harrison, Ms. Ellis, Ms. Stein, as well as all the building leaders who participated in tonight's presentation. You know, we certainly as a board appreciate the update and looking at the full picture of, you know, where we are at this point in the year, recognizing that things may change as we go forward. But, you know, I think you've heard, you know, some consistent messaging from the board this evening of, you know, some of the priorities going forward into the year. And, you know, we look forward to the continued good work of the entire district staff in, you know, these challenging times. So with that, we'll open up our community comment period. First, we have Jennifer Lippman, 56 Manor Pond Lane. If she could be promoted, please. Just remember everyone to try to, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Also, I should add that for anyone watching at home who doesn't want to comment or watching later, you can always send us an email at board@irvingtenschools.org and we will be, those comments will all get responded to in one way or another by the appropriate people. So with that, Ms. Lippman, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi. I feel like I'm always speaking at these meetings. I, so I understand, I want to comment about the, you know, rejection of the AM PM model for second and third grade. And I understand the concerns with the AM PM model and I and I understand why it was ultimately rejected. I personally voted for it, but with major reservations and actually against what was really convenient to my family. So I don't feel strongly disappointed by this news because I had mixed feelings about it. But I do just want to take this opportunity to say that my eight year old has physically been to school 15 times since March 13. Now granted, he missed a Monday, Tuesday in his cohort A because he had a runny nose on a Sunday. I got him a COVID test that Sunday afternoon at urgent care out of an abundance of caution. And then the results, which were negative, didn't come back till Tuesday afternoon, at which point he had missed his only opportunity for in person learning that week because he had basically a 48 hour runny nose that coincided with the only two days of the week that he gets to go to school. So it was an entire two weeks that he wasn't in the classroom for a 48 hour runny nose. So in that situation, if he had been in the AM PM model, at least he wouldn't have been out for the entire week. But students who've attended every possible day of school in grades two and three then therefore have been a total of 17 times presumably because they've been the other two times my son missed. And I mean, my son is doing great academically and I, you know, I understand what Mary Ellis was presenting about the academic targets. He's absolutely on target. His teacher is phenomenal. In fact, she's so phenomenal that I can only imagine how much my son would benefit from being with her in person more often. There is just so much that cannot happen remotely, social, emotional and executive function aspects of learning. And no amount of tutoring or parent attention with the remote learning can replicate that. And as much as I I do appreciate what the teachers are trying to do with the social emotional learning. So that being said, I understand that the AM PM model isn't the right solution. But then what I want to urge the board and the administration to think about is, let's put all of our effort toward getting these kids in Dow's Lane back in school full time. Armonk is doing it. Chappaqua is doing it. Scarsdale is doing it. Briarcliff, Bronxville, I mean, my college roommate has a kindergartner and a first grader in Armonk and they're in school full time. And the districts I've named have not had any two week closures in their elementary schools. And I know that the hardships of the AM PM model were a big factor in its rejection, but I can guarantee you that the families that said they would have hardships with that would not have hardships if our children returned to school full time. I know there are other river towns that are not full time. And one can always cite, you know, to districts that are doing less than we are or having more trouble than we are. But there are many excellent schools in Westchester and Long Island that are in person full time for their young elementary. So I just, I don't think we should base our aspirations on the lowest common denominator. So I just want to make sure that we haven't written off the possibility of getting the I just want to make sure that we haven't written off the possibility of getting the kids back in school full time sometime before the end of the 2021 spring. And with that, I have a question, which is, do we know when teachers will be able to get the vaccine? I read a New York Times article that they would be prioritized. And do we think that having vaccinated teachers would allow changes particularly in the younger grades where studies show that there's lower transmission in younger kids? I read another article the other day that, you know, recent studies are showing that children are not driving the spread of COVID-19 and that the potential to transmit increases with age. So if Dow's Lane staff and teachers could get the vaccine in a priority and young children are less likely to transmit, is there any hope for reopening full time this spring? Sorry, that was a bit of a long.
Thank you. We're flexible with the three minutes tonight, Jennifer, but you raised some really good points. And first, I do want to respond to your observation about the number of days that your kids have been in attendance and then and even in comparison to the others. And and I actually flipped to my calendar to take a peek at it, then to look to think of the impact of the the closures that at Dow's Lane and then how those are you know, are affecting kids when you have, like I said before, we related to teachers, that idea of life happens and you could, there may be other days where a child is out and those real effects. So I say that not just to echo your comments, but to just to let you know that that really resonated with me. With regard to your your final question, because I want to circle back into something where I want to engage Liza and Andrea in conversation, that I'm reading all the same things you are. We are not getting any guidance related to the impacts of of the vaccine and how that may shift any changes in Department of Health guidance. One would presume that we would have fewer opportunities for staff to actually contract the illness themselves, which then would have a different impact. But I don't know if that would relate to or translate into any shifts in our ability to increase the density of attendance in school. But what we have done on more than one occasion, and that's why I would invite Liza and Andrea to speak to this. That we've had gone through extensive routines of looking to see what we could do to go to 100% attendance in Dow, in Dow's Lane. And we can come up with a model where we believe we could physically accommodate it. There would need to be an investment in technology and we'd have to, you know, outfit spaces differently. And it would take us time to actually physically get ready to do that. But assuming we could clear those hurdles, there are a couple of other obstacles that lie before us. And rather than me telling you, we have the benefit of having Liza and Andrea on the call. So I would ask them to to really speak to some of those challenges and then Mary, Carol, and I will supplement that as necessary.
And then, Mrs. Lippman, thank you. So we are constantly reflecting and looking at our practices and what we could do to get all of our children back on site. That is absolutely our goal. So as Dr. Harrison mentioned, we have looked at models where we do have the space to get all of our children in spread out six feet apart. The additional challenge would be the supervision. Since the children have to be six feet apart, they can't fit in one classroom. So that would make two classrooms for each class. And then you need the double staff to supervise the children, which we don't have at this time. So while we keep exploring and looking at other options, some of them present more challenges. We also follow the Department of Health and New York State guidelines, and we're still at six feet apart. Governor Cuomo hasn't changed that yet. So we can't put more children in the classroom than can be spaced appropriately based on New York State.
So, Andrea, thank you. And I just want to demonstrate the the level of specificity that we have gone through in our planning. You could tell us exactly how many staff members we would need to be able to make that shift, additional staff members.
The last time I checked, it was 16.
So 16 additional staff members. So when we go back, we think that's going to be, that would be hundreds of thousands of dollars in additional staff. So when we think about that, I kind of point to Michael, your comment before about FTEs. But let's step back and say money isn't the barrier here, that money isn't the obstacle. I'm going to tell you straightforward, and I'll say to anyone in the community, we can't hire 16 people. We are a constant, and look at every single board agenda from the start of this year. We are having monitors resign and we're hiring people throughout the school year. I don't think there's been a time during this school year where we've been fully staffed in our monitor positions to be able to really fill every single role where we have teachers teaching remotely. So when we say at a monitor position, that is someone that is their base, their, I didn't even say base. Their role is to supervise, as in the title of the position, to monitor students. So they are going to watch students. If we were to shift into this model, we would want to hire a higher-level employee. Typically, an instructional aide that can support instruction. Right? So because we have labor rules that we have to follow, which is going to be more expensive. But simply stated, we can't, if if I came to you with a proposal and said, we could do this for Dow's Lane. And it will cost us 350,000 or $400,000. And this is how we think we can pay it, pay for it. And Carol comes up with a responsible plan for us. That's great. But I'm going to tell you, we'll be trying to hire people until June.
Am I, am I still unmuted?
Yes, you are, Mrs. Lippman.
Oh, okay. So two follow-up responses to that. One is, I strongly believe that if there was through the I E F or the P T S A or something, a fundraising effort done with the express written purpose of getting money for aides or monitors so that our kids could be back in school full time, you would get $300,000, I believe, pretty quickly. I I know this is impacting a lot of our ability to actually make money ourselves. The other question I was going to have is, so what is your understanding then of how those other school districts like Scarsdale or Armunk or Chappaqua? Do they just have more staff than we do in terms of aides? Because they are, I know anecdotally from my college roommate, who's in Armunk, that they have half the class with the teacher and half with an aide. In, because obviously the six feet of distancing, as Dr. Cantor said, they can't all be in the same room.
Correct. There's a variety of different reasons. So there are some cases where there is more staffing than we have, where they're able to allocate the staff. Some cases where they have, like we already have, and supplemented staff with additional aides. And then there's other scenarios where they simply have larger spaces than we do, where you can fit more kids in a classroom. And so throughout this conversation, I've noted multiple times that this was focused on Dow's Lane. Because we do not have the flexibility to even explore 100% attendance at Main Street School because there isn't the physical space on the campus. The class being an old building that's roughly 110 years old, that the classrooms are very small. That we don't even have the level of flexibility that we have at Dow's Lane with larger classrooms. And there's fewer supplemental spaces in the building that we'd be able to utilize. So simply, the square footage isn't there, the personnel isn't there. Your point about fundraising, that very well may be true. So if we could cross whatever those financial hurdles are, whether it was the district putting the bill, sharing it with grant opportunities or fundraising opportunities. At the end of the day, there's a number of factors. One, we have to think the fact that I do not believe, and I say this, you know, with significant amount of certainty, that we're not going to be able to find the people to do it. And then when we return to normalcy, we'll be dealing with hundreds of thousands of dollars of unemployment costs that we'd have to be mindful of managing in the future. So the shortcoming for us right now is the fact that I don't think we could find the time to be able to staff those people because they're simply not out there. We don't have substitutes. We've looked to hire building subs where we'd be paying people a half decent wage and give them health insurance and folks aren't coming forward for those vacancies. So that's, that is the real, real challenge.
Great. Well, I guess I I'll hope then that
Ms. Lippman, at this point, it's not, I don't want to be rude, but it's meant to be a dialogue back and forth. We afford you ample time. So at this point, we're going to move on.
Okay, thank you.
And next we have Stephanie Fonseca, 25, Eiler Lane.
Hi, good evening. This has been a long but very informative meeting. So I appreciate all of you staying and especially all the administrators presenting tonight. I had two questions. My first is throughout tonight's meeting, pace, academic pacing has been discussed in various situations. And it is my understanding that Irvington is pacing about three to four weeks. And I hate to use this word, but I don't know what other word to use, but three to four weeks behind. Could you clarify if that statistic is static across K-12 or if there's any difference among the grades?
Sure. And thank you for the question. The figure of three to four weeks was one that I quoted a while back. And as we've talked about, our teachers have thought very carefully about how to compress things to reduce that amount of time. And so as we move through the year, the amount of time that they are, I'll use the word behind, where they may have been a year before, gets smaller and smaller. There are some classes I know at the high school that feel that they're, they're totally there. They're where they used to be. They're moving along. It's, it's easier to do that with older children. And we also have to remember, the teachers teach children, they don't teach courses. And they can only move as fast as the children are ready to move. So our teachers are very, very carefully thinking about how to get the most out of every single minute and how they can reach the same place at the end of the year where they've always intended to go. But I again want to be very, very clear that not every child moves at the same pace. Not every classroom moves at the same pace. And if I were to walk through a hall and see every second grade teacher seeing the exact same lesson on the exact same day, I would know there's a problem because those teachers aren't responding to the children who are in front of them. And for me, that is what a teacher has to do first, is teach the children, not the course and not the calendar.
I think it's really important that people understand the concept of pacing. Right? Pacing is a, is a, is an education term that's used in the profession of education around curriculum instruction. It's, it's very specific. You know, you can change pacing throughout the year. You can trim. You can adapt curriculum. You can adopt curriculum to adapt it. You could, so many different ways. It's such a I don't want to use the word loaded in a negative sense, but it's a loaded question to talk about pacing. You know, the one thing I think Ms. Propper said would talk about the regions earlier in terms of pacing. I just know from my own experience as an administrator and educator and so on, that you can look, the beauty of a standards-based education for students is that you can do that kind of work very frequently and on the fly and and through these Wednesdays that we're providing. I think one of the things maybe we could have highlighted in the Wednesday piece is that, and I think you did actually tonight, talked about how they're working in looking at the standards and doing that. So the pacing piece is something that is very flexible and we're quite lucky. I mean, last year, we were, we don't know where we'll be this year in terms of the state exams, whether it be K through eight or the region's exams in high schools. But without those, you know, it's almost like a teacher's dream because they get to be creative again and go in and sort of say, these are the standards we really need the kids to learn in order to get to the next level. So it allows teaching and learning to really flourish. So I think it's a way deeper conversation than just this.
So David, I would, thank you for saying that, because I was going to raise a similar point. But I would, related to testing, if, and if I had to guess now, we're not going to see testing in the spring. And and assuming we don't, we also have to be mindful, all of a sudden, we're finding like two more weeks of instruction. Right? So without the test, there's more teaching time. And then when we think about where Irving, saying where Irvington is and the estimations that Mary gave about, you know, some of that shifts in pacing from where we were in the past, knowing, David, that those adjustments are occurring and will continue to occur. But other schools are all in the same place, right? And we have to think about, before we used to think about AP exams and students in the Northeast always being disadvantaged because we start later in the year, we have snow days that those in the South and the Midwest don't deal with in the same way. So kids in other parts of the country have more days of instruction before the AP exams than our kids in the Northeast. Well, you know what? Large parts of the country, kids haven't even been in school physically at all this year. So the the level of thinking about pacing, the level of engagement is across the board everywhere in the in the country. So it's a challenge. But as we've heard, our teachers are doing an awesome job. There, we have great leaders, our instructional coaches. We, the name Sarah was referenced before, Sarah Russ, our secondary instructional coach. When we look at Nancy Beck Deacon and Christine Rosner, our elementary coaches, they're doing an amazing job partnering with our teachers. We're going to get there. I don't have any question about it. I have all the faith in the world in all of them. We're going to get there, but we're going to adapt and modify as we go each and every day.
I'm so sorry. I didn't mean for that question to be so I didn't mean to flare up emotion. I was asking the question really specifically in context to compare the AM PM model with the A A Flex B B model for our youngest students. So I apologize if that was
And Stephanie, and if it came across as that way, I would just say
Okay.
Speaking as as educator, so you heard from Mary, David and me, that was passion coming out about what we did. So that was a positive emotion because we're inspired by the work that's happening in our schools from Mary and me and David, as an instructional leader himself. He he's doing that work in the city and he makes that connection with what he sees us doing here. So honestly, it was our passion coming out. It's just the faith we have in the people that are doing this work in our schools. So please understand that our response was really just our enthusiasm and our and our commitment to the work.
No, and I am, again, Stephanie, I will echo that. And if my passion came across as anything else, my apologies. No, no, please, no. I I am grateful. I love to see that passion come out. But this kind of segues into my my next question. And as is probably very obvious, I'm very disappointed to see that the administration did not extend the AM PM model to grades two and three. You know, to echo what Ms. Lippman said, my first grader was able to attend school in person in December, five days this month. Whereas my third grader was able to attend two days in December. Purely because of the closure. Additionally, one of the comments, and please forgive me if my understanding was not correct, but one of the comments that Dr. Harrison made is that there's increased risk to faculty because they are exposed to double the students daily in the AM PM model. However, it is my understanding that in the last three months, that the two Dow's Lane closures were not due to the AM PM model versus the hybrid model, but rather just staff exposure and the number of contacts that those staff members had with other staff and therefore it was a staffing issue. And then lastly, the board has expressed numerous times tonight that it wants to support our amazing teachers and staff. And yeah.
Try to speak for us.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that's what you said. And that it is my understanding that most of the teachers at Dow's Lane has expressed the desire to move second and third grade to the AM PM model. In fact, on a, the the same Google meet that Ms. Ellis was referring to before. Ms. Scanlon, a second grade teacher, said that she is, quote, begging for the AM PM model. So it would be wonderful to support our teachers by extending this model to second and third grade and then figuring out creative ways to support the parents that need it. So that's that. Thank you.
So seeing no one else in the Q and A, we'll now move on to the consent agenda. Are there Are there any questions on tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor? I, so Dr. Harris, I turn back over to you for your usual description of the events.
Yeah, so I would say that there aren't as, as many notable actions to take this evening other than welcoming Patricia as we did at the top of the meeting. We do have a few personnel actions that are, that certainly are notable related to some stipends that are just highlighting what we talked about earlier today. And I guess it feels that way earlier today rather than earlier this evening. But about the great work that continues to happen in our schools and that the fact that we're still providing these co-curricular and extracurricular activities. And then finally, I want to thank the PTSA for funding yet another grant supporting our work here in the school district.
Now again, thank you to both the IF and the PTSA for their grants to fund all of the wonderful initiatives that they do. We do have now our, what is our second community comment period in the agenda, which is for people who have not had a chance to ask questions previously. So if there's anyone else who wants to make a comment, they can put their name, address in the Q and A feature. But as we wait to see if there was anyone else. Our next meeting is for now Tuesday, January 12th. Again, here and via Zoom, as Dr. Harrison mentioned earlier in the meeting, that we'll likely have a special meeting that first week in January to provide the board with an update on the Capitol project and where we're at at this point. So stay tuned. Wishing everyone in the school community happy holidays. Stay safe over break and we look forward to seeing everyone back in the new year. So with that, if we could have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved. Second.
There we go. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.